Yes, please.
So that's Janko's contract and again, that's on a state contract.
Do you have an amount, David, do you have an amount for that?
No, the annual contracts, we don't have amounts. They're pre-betted, like basically the state of Massachusetts goes out to bid for services and equipment. So Janko and you'll see that some of our other vendors, I think, school health possibly. These companies have already been vetted through the state. So the state has a contract with them and then we're able to purchase supplies and materials and have them do repairs through the state contract. We get the state cost, the state per hour prevailing wage. So that's how these contracts work. Unfortunately, this year because of the COVID situation, we've had a lot more of these contracts because we're buying PPE. We're buying all types of equipment. So sorry that I keep coming back to you with these various contracts, but it's just easier to do the contract, get it in line and then we can purchase the materials and goods.
But is it effectively open-ended then? We don't know how much we're going to need to spend when we sign the contractor.
You know, when we purchase it that way, but we don't do a contract. This is the only contract that we have.
You're just contracting to do business with the company. It's not a purchase order. You get those on your, when you... Sorry, Michelle, were you gonna say something?
That was gonna be my question. It sounded to me like we were just agreeing that this would be the people we would buy things from when and if we need to.
Right, and you're able to approve or not approve items on the warrant when you review that.
Caroline, at the, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, David presented about 23 companies.
No, I know, and those were, that's what we usually do is get a long list and we do the whole list at once. So I was just, I just wondered if there was some kind of difference between our annual approvals, which is, as you mentioned, a whole group of contracts. And you know, this seems like, as David said, because of the pandemic, we have other expenses and other, you know, supplies, et cetera, that we need. So I just wanted to, part of the reason I'm asking is that there actually may be other people that have questions about that. Because normally when we have a new contract, we have an amount. You know, like a new company that we're contracting with, we have an amount. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the difference. Thank you.
Yeah, these are state contracts and unfortunately, I think we may have a few more that are gonna be coming up, depending on what we have to purchase for, whether it's HVAC equipment, PPE. So unfortunately, this year is a little bit of an anomaly, but you are right Caroline, that typically you try to get all the contracts done, you know, right around July 1st. But we've had a few stragglers also, so.
Because there are vendors that we've never utilized before. We've never, we've never bought disposable gowns or the kinds of shields, face shields and surgical masks that we're buying now. And so we're utilizing vendors that we've never used before, so we didn't open up annual contracts on them.
So if there's no further questions on that particular contract. The next one is for our wastewater treatment plant. So, which is actually a good thing. We actually have Weston and Sampson was the only company who submitted a bid. They're also the only company that attended. We had like a pre-bid conference and they were the only company that attended that. But it's actually a good thing because we really have a good working relationship with Weston and Sampson and they're very familiar with our equipment in the wastewater treatment plant. And we actually go to bid, as you probably remember, we go to bid on this particular contract with the town because the town has, also has a wastewater treatment plant. So when you go into bid and you can bid like multiple things, you get a better price because now you have two wastewater treatment plants. So the pricing is much better. So on this particular contract, it's a one-year contract with a two option years. And next year it's for $99,600. I think that's in your packets. It should be a letter from David Field that kind of explains the contract in totality. But, so it's going up 1.4% for this current year, start next year. And then we would have two option years, but the option years go up by the CPI. So that probably only will go up like between 1% and 2% most likely next year. And in fact, depending on how the economy goes, it could go, may not even go up, so. So anyways, that's for the wastewater treatment plant. So I don't know if you want to do a separate vote for that or if you have any questions or how you want to handle that.
Let's do the vote because you put a money amount on this one. So let's do the Weston and Sampson. Do the other ones have money amounts?
No, I already agree with you on that Nancy. That's why I stopped and asked you the question because I think where this has a dollar figure, I think it's better to vote on this separately. So on the Weston and Sampson, again, it's $99,600 for fiscal year '21. And then we have two option years. So next, probably next June or next May, I'll probably come in front of the board and ask them for approval for the following year.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion.
Nancy?
Yes.
May I ask, how long have we been using this company?
Ah geez, I think we've had them probably, I would say six to eight years in that ballpark, something like that, yeah.
Okay, so, because I know we had some difficulties about that long ago, so this was not the company that we were having.
These guys have been pretty good.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure because I remembered we had, and I wasn't sure, okay. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't the same.
If he does a great job for the town, he's awesome.
That's great, thank you.
Go ahead, you're on mute.
Sorry, thanks. And so the $99,600, that's within, that was what was, that's within what was budgeted for this.
It only went up 1.4%. I think that Marilyn actually, in her budget, I think she carried a little bit higher than that. So it actually, I think it might have been a little bit lower, so actually it's right in the sweet spot.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, it's within a couple of thousand dollars of what was budgeted for it. We knew there would be a modest increase because it was a new contract cycle. So fortunately, it didn't go over that.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions on, just on the Weston Sampson contract? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the Weston and Sampson wastewater treatment plant operation contract.
Star, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes?
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes?
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, go ahead David. Now we're on to Southworth Milton.
Yep, so this is a little bit different contract. Again, it's a state contract, it's a two-page contract. And we use them for like heavy equipment. We haven't really done a lot of business with them, but they're actually in the process of helping out the DPW and Bill Matthews. They're actually working on that practice field that's in the back of Moscato Stadium. So we've got to use them for some equipment that we've got to rent in order to move the soil around and stuff. So again, this company has been vetted out by the state. They're on state contract and it's for really for heavy duty equipment. It's not something we normally do, but because we have this field project going on, we've had to execute a contract with them.
Okay, and the, what is it, school health? Oh, are there any questions on?
Yep, so school health, they're on the Massachusetts Higher Education Consortium contract. So again, it's similar to the state contract, but it's a group of, it's a consortium of higher education colleges and some public schools who go out to bid similar to the state. And this is actually a perfect example of where we're purchasing a lot of PPE. These guys provide a lot of equipment and supplies to the nurses. Thermometers and masks and gloves, all kinds of PPE. So we've really been purchasing a lot of equipment from, from school health. And they're actually really nice to deal with. Kim that works over there, she's very helpful. She works very closely with Zoom Mail and she does an outstanding job. So again, this is a, this is under the Massachusetts Higher Ed Consortium contract collaborative.
Any questions? All right, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Janko Sales and Service Contract, the Southworth Milton Contract and the School Health Contract.
O'Neal, second. O'Neal, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes?
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes?
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, David.
Thanks a lot, everybody. Have a great night. Good luck with everything.
You're not staying?
I might stay for a little while. We had to do it last night in Halls, so.
What did, nevermind, I don't wanna know. Okay. Next up, discussion and vote to approve the district plan for 2020-2021, Dr. Caprow.
Okay, so we are, as everyone knows, we're on a very tight timetable here. And so after the last presentation, we sent out some media. We sent out a story in the media that included all the links and resources. We attached all of that to the website. We sent out information to all of our families and our staff to please take a look at the presentation. I realize it was quite lengthy, it was four and a half hours long. And we were able to answer several questions. We do have a lot of questions we haven't yet gotten to. We have the answers to them. However, as I said, we are on a very arguably unrealistic timeline from the state for good reasons. We are quickly approaching the start of school. But we had to submit our preliminary three choices or our preliminary three plans. One for remote, one for in-person and one for a combination of the two referred to as hybrid. We did that and we were told that we would get feedback on that by today. And then we would have to make any changes if necessary or provide clarification. And the school committee was to vote on the primary plan that we would begin the school year with and we would submit the entire package on Monday. We had a call with the commissioner today, a very quickly scheduled call. And it was noted that the feedback is not yet ready. And so they did give us a slight extension on turning in the actual report. We still need the school committee vote on the preferred, what's called the preferred plan and the entire report, basically the, or really the entire four and a half hour presentation in narrative form with any new or updated information, which there is very minimal. That is ultimately going to be presented to the state. And we have been told that we aren't all going to get feedback. After all, they're going to personally make phone calls to districts that they have concerns about or wish for more clarification. So I don't expect that we will get a call. We are in the over 90% range of Massachusetts districts that ultimately are going to propose to you, the school committee, the same plan that our colleagues are proposing. And in fact, the commissioner told us today that most of New England is doing the same thing. There are some that are going full in-person. But I would just like to reiterate that while we haven't gotten some of the answers out that people have asked, it isn't because we don't have the answers. In fact, much of it was in the presentation, but obviously we provided a lot amount of dense information in a very compact form and a very relatively short amount of time. Four and a half hours is long, but for a work of this magnitude and a plan that is really this serious and important, it really isn't that long to absorb all of that information. And that really wasn't very many days ago. So it is understandable that there are some details that need clarification, need a better description. And I feel very confident however, that all of the questions we're asking have very comprehensive answers to them. And so the FAQ page is one that I personally work on because I've been working on the report because I need to have it completed for the state. I have not been able to update that. But all of those will be on there right after the report is submitted to the state. We have several committees that are working on some of the frequently asked questions and there will be a lot added at one time. We just have limited manpower for the amount of work that the state's requiring at this point. So we have to really prioritize what is due first and get that completed. I did send a link to the working document to all of you so that you could see it. I don't anticipate that you will see anything that is unusual or unexpected or hasn't already been presented to you. Again, it is the written format, but certainly we would answer any questions that you might have. Ultimately, due to a number of reasons, one, first and foremost for us is the risk factor of many of our students right now. We did a risk analysis that we went through in the presentation, which included things like loss of learning. We have documented what some refer to as summer slide in our students when they come back to school in the spring and it's something we consistently work on every fall. We are very concerned about the six-month lap, gap of in-person education and anticipate that many students will have fallen behind when they ultimately get back to school. Certainly, the social emotional impact is critical. This is not, this is not a conjecture. We have information that shows that the student, we have several students who are in, in trauma right now. They are in very serious situations mentally and mental health-wise and they have not been getting the therapy that many of them only get at school. They have not had that adult to turn to at school in some instances. We have students in foster care, we have students who are homeless. We have students who are part of active DCF cases. And it's very concerning that we don't have eyes on them right now and that we don't have supervision of their cleanliness, of their clothing, of their demeanor, of their intake of food, things like that. So another that I, that goes along these lines is an incidence of child abuse. We have seen that actually across the country and that is not unique. It has also been the case in Easton where we do have students that we are very concerned about in terms of neglect and/or abuse. And these students have been relegated to their homes for quite a long time. And so we're very concerned about seeing some of those students. Nutritional insecurity. We were able to provide food while schools were closed, but we did, while we had an extraordinary effort by some, by wonderful volunteers in our food service department, we were able to provide 60 to 70 meals a day. And we have approximately almost 600 students who have substantiated food insecurity. And even when they don't have access to the food, they, when they do have access to food readily, it is typically not very nutritional. And so we have many students who their primary source of food is breakfast and lunch at school five days a week. We have not had any food replacement since the last day of school in June. We also have loss of student, parents' employment. And it is, education is a form of childcare for many people. And these families are having difficulty getting back to work and providing for themselves, which of course creates this cycle of social emotional challenges and mental distress. And we have had up to 20% unemployment rate in the town of Easton throughout this crisis. And also the lack to access, the lack of access to essential services. We have students again who have physical therapy, speech therapy, things that are extremely difficult to provide in a remote online platform. Students who are receiving counseling and also English language services and special education services. And so we have a great deal of work to do to make sure that we are able to backfill any skills that may have been lost while they're gone. So that said, those are some, some well-documented risks of students in our town right now. In addition to that however, we have other information that is, we feel responsible to share with you. That is, for example, that in-person has been the mandate of the state and it has been made clear to us on more than one occasion that funding will not be received unless there is, what is defined as more than half of students present more than half of the week. We feel as if the plan that we are proposing to you this evening does satisfy that requirement. And there is a federal stimulus being considered right now by the federal government for $220 billion. And two-thirds of that money is completely, we are completely ineligible for that money if we are not back in school. Even to the extent that we explained in a reduced version. We have some money left over from grants, but they all expire in December. And so if we were to have to go remote due to very significant peaks or concerns in Easton in next spring, for example, or in the winter, we would not have any more funding for PPE, for nursing subs, for technology repairs, really for anything that would keep us going remotely during that time. And we also would have to lay off quite a lot of employees. There are many employees who it is difficult to have them working remotely. There are job descriptions that just do not lend themselves to remote work. In the spring, we were able to provide some alternative placements in terms of, you know, we provided online professional development for custodians, for example. But that is not something we could do on an extended basis. And so if the buildings were closed, we would lay off quite a number of staff members. Even for the, the teaching and learning, we have limited spots for, for remote work. And so that would be problematic for that as well. So these are some other details that certainly we feel as though the concern about our students is primary, but I think it's important that you understand all of the elements that contribute. In addition, we are, we don't yet have the technology that we've ordered. And if we, at any point, if we go full remote, we are required to make sure that every student has a device. We were able to deal with this in the spring because we were on asynchronous learning, which means assigned work, not necessarily live. So a family of three children, for example, could share one device very easily and complete their work throughout different periods of the day. However, we are now mandated and we want to provide synchronous learning now that we are more prepared to do so. We feel that it is more engaging, it is more effective. However, children each need their own device in order to engage in synchronous learning because it happens during the typical school day. And they can't share devices. And so families that were able to get by in the spring with one or two devices will now need one device for every child in addition to devices for family members who are perhaps still working from home, et cetera. So there are many considerations. We feel however, that ultimately the five-step hybrid option is the one that is preferred at this point and recommended to the school committee for beginning school in September. It actually includes all three modes, remote, in-person and hybrid. The hybrid is extremely conservative. We have structured it in a way that we can move back and forth as current medical conditions and evidence-based research indicates is necessary. We are working extremely closely with the Board of Health, as I've said many times, and we are analyzing the data that is coming in weekly from the Massachusetts Department of Health. And so we're very aware of what's happening. Our Board of Health makes personal contact with every COVID case in town regularly. And so they're aware of every single individual who has been diagnosed and many that have been tested and found to be negative. So after really participating in every subgroup in the district right now with, as we've said, over 150 stakeholders and many, many educators discussing with, just initial conversations with unions and the leadership team, we feel very confident that the plan we are putting forward allows us to make changes as necessary based on the needs of the district. But it is also flexible enough to allow any student, any parent who feels as though their student is compromised or they are uncomfortable with their student coming into school, they have the ability to stay home and work remotely. And any student who needs to come back to school has the opportunity to do that. While we are able to identify high-needs students and invite them to come in, this is a different time. I was talking to the counseling staff this week and they have said, they actually, they have to set new benchmarks for trauma at this point because everybody is at a different baseline. And so just doing that is going to identify a lot more need in the district. We don't know who those students are and so not being able to invite them to come back, being able to provide services that they can benefit from is, is concerning to us. We trust that parents will know the current situation of their children and whether they need to come back to school or not. And this will provide an opportunity for get, for them to get the critical services that they need. So if we need to switch a phase or if we need to switch to a different plan, we feel as though we have the flexibility to be able to do that in a very nimble way. We will communicate that to the school committee and the community and we theoretically, we should be able to do that within one day. Now, there is a lot of information that again, people have been asking about. I will say of some of the more common, I can, I can answer those if you'd like. For example, people had concerns about Phase Three only being two to three weeks long. It is not only two to three weeks long, it is a minimum of two to three weeks long. We have communicated, but many people are seeing the slides as opposed to the presentation. So it's, it needs to be in context. We don't want Phase Three to be any less than probably three weeks. That's the absolute minimum. Because we have to make sure that we are serving students appropriately in that time before we add more students. Phase Three could be months. Phase Three could be the entire school year. We, we don't know that until we continue to monitor the metrics that indicate what is safe and what is not safe. We also had several questions about the facilitators. Will they be certified teachers? That again, indicates a misunderstanding of the role of the facilitator. So the classroom teacher is teaching all the classes. We actually had a demonstration with the tech department. We are putting together videos to show people what that looks like. It was very clear. I was on the receiving end of a lesson in a classroom at OA and it was extremely clear. The audio was very clear. I could see what was being written on the board. I could see the teacher speaking. It was very understandable. And if I were a student in the class, there would, where some educators actually have said they don't want a facilitator, they can do it on their own, which is fine. But if an educator wants to work with a facilitator, we can provide a person who is in the classroom and is monitoring what's happening on the screen. So that if I was a student learning remotely, either in that cohort or as a full remote student, I could ask questions and the teacher could easily be notified that I had a question and what that question is. I could contribute, I could be called on to answer. So it's, it's full participation in the class. Anything that a, for example, a paraprofessional would do in a classroom, they would just do this way at a screen. So in a classroom, they may answer a student's question. That, that's, that's on page five, just turn to page five, something as simple as a clarification like that. Or they may, under the direction of a teacher who has a lesson plan, they may read a book with students. Very similar to what, again, they would, they would do in the classroom. It is simply on the computer screen, but it allows the student to be part of the classroom. There are many districts, or not many, there are some districts that are utilizing an LMS, Learning Management System provided by the state. These are largely asynchronous. It's been very clear to us that that is not the most effective means of teaching classes and parents and staff alike have shared with us that they're not interested. That they're not interested in asynchronous learning going forward. They want live learning for their students. And so we did not consider that an option. We also are aware that very, very few districts in the state are choosing to start full remote. I have met with those superintendents. I know them very well. We talk frequently. Um in some cases, they are part of um. They are part of counties that have accelerated rates of COVID that are different than ours. And others I've found um when I examine the model with them, it is a matter of semantics and definition. So, for example, I um. Learned about one yesterday and 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 um communicated with the. Um superintendent and learned that remote for them is is basically our hybrid. Our remote is fully remote and no one's in the building. Um their remote is. Remote learning, but high needs students. And EL and students who need to come in are coming into the building for in-person instruction. That's our hybrid. So i- i- it can sometimes be deceiving unless you are aware of the model itself and have access. To people who can explain that um as we have done. And so um I really caution people to. To make judgments based on labels because we are intimately aware of what everyone else is doing. We're intimately aware of what we're doing. And again, I I confidently present to you. This option as the one that we need to move forward with in the district. It gives the most options for parents to know what is best for their children. It does not force a parent to do something that they don't feel is appropriate. We have very good safety precautions in place. We have essentially doubled. Everything that has been recommended to us. Um we have. Tackled the ventilation problem that is uh uh an issue in other districts, and we are providing our unions. As soon as they're finished, we have, we got a uh preliminary report today. It's perfectly fine. We have some adjustments to make and we're gonna do that. Um and we have told the union or we, I I told the largest union that we were going to prepare that doc. Present that documentation, but we're gonna present it to all of the unions and the public. So that everybody can see exactly what it is we're talking about. We have no interest whatsoever. In compromising truly our EPS family members, our children, our community. And I have full faith in the professionals who have been working on these plans. I trust them. I trust their judgment and I support them one hundred percent. And so. We bring to you this evening the five phase. What we're calling hybrid plan to begin the school year um for your consideration for a vote to send to the state.
Okay, thank you. All right, um why don't we start with Caroline?
Yeah, I'm happy to start a few um lines of con- con- conversation. Uh first of all, I was very pleased to see that there has been an important update. I have to be honest, I was, I know that we always said that the average, the phase three would be two to three weeks. Or longer if necessary, but just calling it two to three weeks was alarming to me and I think many others. I noticed that it's been changed now in the working document to be determined. But in addition, I wanted to say that looking around at various school reopenings across really the world. Um it takes about six weeks to kind of know what the effects in terms of any kind of viral spread. Will be. So I think two to three weeks, just it it's, it sounded way too too short to me to begin with. And having looked into it more closely, I think it's entirely unrealistic to even. Think about it in terms of a possibility. I suppose a miracle could happen. But uh I I think that, you know, what you just said about the fact that it would be. You know, that you were looking at three weeks as a minimum, I would like to consider six to eight weeks as a minimum. But I also think that we should be looking really weekly and maybe increasing the number of meetings that we have to discuss this. At all of the metrics relation related to the infection. Right now, Eastern is in okay shape. We're at one point one one percent in terms of infection rate. That's actually. It's lower than Sharon, it's lower than Mansfield, it's lower than many Foxborough, it's lower than many other communities. However, it's, you know, as a state, we're we're ticking up a bit, and that's alarming. So I I do think that we have to constantly be aware of, you know, the uh incidence of the virus in the community. Not just our own community, but surrounding communities. And um that that's going to be a very uh important factor in in how we move forward. The other thing is that several times in the earlier document, I don't know if this has been changed yet. But it's ta- talks about the uh. Uh reduced risk of children spreading the virus. We we now um, I I wouldn't say we know exactly, but there's very substantial evidence. That children actually can spread the virus very efficiently. And in fact, there the the new estimate is that young children spread the virus about twice as as. Efficiently as adults do. So uh this kind of notion that unfortunately is perpetrated at the top levels of government. That children are practically immune is is simply um. And a completely misguided notion. So I think that we really do have to be, I I've said all along. You know, much of what we decide is just going, we're going to be led by the virus. And so I do think that it's important that, you know, now we're talking about to be determined in terms of phase three. Um I do think that it's very important for parents to have a choice. I can't say that I would necessarily. Looking back, have my children in school, in person. But I do think that we have to honor other families' choices. And I also know there are many children that need that in-person experience. Um more than most, so that and that and Lisa certainly uh spoke about that uh. To a large extent. So I I do feel that I can't, I don't have the right to second guess other families' decisions. So I would be inclined to support the hybrid mo- model, but I do have serious reservations and I do want us to be. Ready to turn on a dime if the infection rate goes up or if we see evidence that having opened school. Uh has a uh negative effect in our own community in terms of the virus. Go ahead. Anyway, I'm I'm done. Thank you.
Did then, okay, Chrissy.
I wanted to also share an import uh a a fact that was brought to our attention this week, actually by the commissioner and. Doctor Prabha may have already have known this. Um the National Teachers Union has um endorsed the the five percent. Rate of of benchmark for closing schools. Um and we are as as a state, we are at two point one percent. So. The commissioner did highlight that for us, the superintendents and assistant superintendents. And I didn't know that the that the Eastern rate was one point one one percent. So that was, that's great to know. Um and I, so I just wanted the community to be aware of that statistic. He actually presented us with a slide today. And we are um tenth from the um.
Lowest.
Lowest, thank you. We are a tenth from the lowest um as a state. Uh for for the infection rate, so. Just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Nancy, if I could respond to that. From my reading, I mean, you know, you know, I'm I'm probably driving everybody nuts with my deep dive into uh. My new, my new fantasy is to to go back to school and become an epidemiologist. But anyway, um. Five percent is too high. It just is. That's my opinion. It's the opinion of many. Very is uh um renowned epidemiologists. So that may be what the commissioner's saying, but I'm going to simply disagree with him.
He was not giving his opinion. He was quoting the Teachers Association. He does not believe, uh he has not given a metric. They are actually working on one, a trigger metric to close uh schools. We can, that is the floor, not the ceiling. So I apologize if it wasn't. As crystal clear as possible at our last presentation, that we are extremely, extremely. Conservative here. Um I don't know if anybody understands. The level of responsibility that comes with making a recommendation with the lives and health of children at stake. I'm a mother, I'm an aunt, I'm a I'm a daughter. At at my most human level, I would never ever put people unreasonably at risk or suggest they should be. And so I don't expect people to follow blindly. I certainly expect people to call us out. And to challenge us to justify our decisions. But there is no way we are going to have any kind of an increase in illnesses and not close schools. I I hope no one thinks that's even a consideration, that we would allow an illness to go rampant through our children. And we would leave schools open. I just need to make that clear if I was, if I was somehow not clear about that before. And I think all of you have been very clear a- about this as well. Currently, I speak to the Director of the Board of Health a a minimum of three times a week, and we're not even in school yet. Um we are extremely serious about this, and she is as well, as you can imagine. So I just want to punctuate that point if. Um there was any question from perhaps somebody watching or who hadn't. Uh been able to participate in the presentation on the last one that we had.
I also just wanna say that is not a number I endorse. I was just sharing information that.
No, thank you. No, I appreciate that. Um it just, you know, didn't reassure me as much as it may have been designed to reassure others. Thank you.
All right, Michelle.
Thank you. Um I do have some questions. Um. I like several people on the board did have the um and still do have. I am um happy to see wording has changed in the most updated um version. And I know that that was.
People were concerned and so we, it was very easy to clarify.
Um. Another concern that I think I've brought up. Maybe in one of the subcommittee meetings is kids not eating until one thirty on this plan. I have, I'm just. I have a really tough time with that. I think that as a teacher, kids lose focus and get cranky and. Become very unproductive as soon as they get hungry. And I really think that if if we do go with this hybrid model, that that is something that needs to be addressed.
Well, we do, we we. Have a great deal of experience with children and and understand how long they and we can wait to eat. Um we have the option of providing lunch. We're meeting with our food service provider. If lunch is not provided and brought home, there is a snack during the day. So children are provided breakfast and a snack, and they have lunch to go home with them. We would never deprive children.
All children are provided breakfast.
Well, they have opportunity. If they don't want it, they don't. Have to participate, but just as in a regular day, they have breakfast and lunch. This includes a snack. But they don't, a parent may not want their child to have a snacks. We have to understand that. That is the case sometimes, but it is available to everyone.
With the hybrid model, it that does help with the, because the students will be six feet apart. That's that's something that also helps us test kind of our systems and see how how that plays out. Um it we are, we will be able to have our students eating. Because the guidance for eating is for the students to remain six feet apart, so that this model actually will will assist us in that.
We need to change it. We can. I I don't want to pre- pretend in any way that we are going to go to school and there are gonna be no issues. We are trying some things for the very first time. No level of preparation is ever going to really get us ready. If we need to get rid of snacks and provide lunch, we simply get rid of snacks and provide lunch. That's it.
Um I just wanna make sure I understand this, the federal funding. Um you said we lose two thirds if we're not in school. So does that mean at any point during the year, like if we start hybrid and November go remote, all of a sudden the money stops?
Uh well, no, if we receive the money, then we don't have to give it back, but it has not been um fully vetted yet. So um and it and we're not guaranteed one third percent of the money either. It's just that two thirds is automatically, we're not even eligible, we can't even apply for it.
Can you tell me um?
Michelle, it's not the funding that we've already received, so that won't go away. It's it's additional funding that's potentially coming.
Right, I I guess I was trying to clarify that, do we have to be in school? Do we have to have that in-school option? For the hundred and seventy days to receive that money. If at any point we went fully remote, does that money come off the table?
No, that's not my understanding. My understanding was that we started school in person. Um if we could and had a safe plan, then we would be eligible for the money.
Um I know that students have the option to do remote. Can you remind me again um what the staff's options are? Cause I know that there's been some feedback with concerns about staff feeling unsafe or uncomfortable with returning. And I'm just not remembering exactly what their options are.
Well, the federal government has several mechanisms for staff, and they would be eligible for everything every other employee. Uh in the country is eligible for. If they can work, they will work. If they can work with appropriate um with um. Accommodations, then certainly we can provide accommodations. If they can work remotely, they can work remotely. Ultimately, if they choose not to work, that's up to them. We cannot pay people who choose not to work. Um if there's a medical issue, I I mean, I can't speak to every single case because every single case is different. One might be a medical issue, one might be a loved one, one might be. Just uncomfortable, one might be, there are many different situations, so I, there is not one answer to that. But there are federal laws in place for um for all employees, just as in every other um industry.
So I just think my final comment is, is I, like Caroline, I personally really struggle with. I don't think my kids would be coming back personally. Um. But then the the just the question of offering choice for other people. And then I think that I'm okay with that. And then I'm, I go back and say, am I enabling? Or putting that child and teacher in danger? Even though that got instinct in me is saying that really wasn't a good thing to be with. So I I I just still going back and forth. But I completely appreciate and value and all the vetting and committees and work that has gone into this. And I think that. If we do go that route, it is the best plan possible. It's just my internal struggle.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, I have a couple of questions. Um so let's go back to the funding that. Um Michelle was just talking about. So the seven hundred eighty-five thousand that we so we already have that?
Yes, and we spent it on technology.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if we're remote or if we're hybrid, that that money's already been spent on the. Technology that's that's coming in.
That's the return to school grant. Yes.
Okay, that's it. Okay. My next question is about facilitators. All right, so let's, let's just, we're gonna do a little scenario here. So let's say that I am a second grade teacher at Parkview, and I'm just picking things. And, okay, so I am going to be in the classroom for four days. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday on the hybrid model. I'm gonna be there for however many hours it was decided. Was it four, four and a half, something like that? I mean, I'll be there all day, but the kids will be there for like four hours. All right, so I'm teaching and I have a group that's remote learning on their. Chrome, they're on their Chromebooks. Okay, am I being filmed and sending it back to? The compute or not, I guess not being filmed, but the kids on the. On the Chromebook are watching me teach. So yeah, I guess I am, right?
There is no filming or recording. It's less than what we're doing right now. There is no filming or recording. It's less than what we're doing right now. Right now, we are being recorded. We're open to the public and we're live streaming on Facebook. And the recording's gonna be available. They're using Google Meet. It's the same platform that they used in the spring. Instead of the teacher, uh, well, that's not necessarily, I was gonna say, instead of the teacher sitting in front of it like I am right now, they may just be standing up. Or they might be sitting in front of it like this. Or they might have a, a book up instead. Or they might be presenting, as you see me present sometimes, and the presentation is up. It is a Google Meet.
Okay.
Their class like they've done um, before.
And there will be, um. I know we've got the, the talk about all these permission slips and. I know the um, technology group was talking about, you know, the, the rules and regulations for doing this and doing that. So.
Guidelines.
Appropriate use. And I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned. You know how things get out in, into the worldwide web and. I just don't want anybody to be put in a bad position as far as. What they're doing.
Yes, of course, and we agree. And honestly, we deal with these issues all the time at. Different levels. I won't say particularly what level, but a certain level, students have phones quite a bit. They have tended to record voices or record videos. So we have had experience with this before. It is not going to be tolerated from anyone, including parents. But to be perfectly honest with you. Google Meet is what we use for remote. They have more of a chance of that happening if they're full remote because. There's no in-class. It's the same exact platform as if they're full remote. So if there's a concern for hybrid. I don't think there should be, but it should be the same concern for remote learning. Because it's the same exact platform. Everybody, every teacher, the schools closed down, and every teacher's at home, and every child's at home, and nobody's in any school. They're using Google Meet. Just to be clear, it's not something different.
And just so people know that we have, um, I, I, Chrissy, I think you could ju- I know there's freckle and there's. There's a bunch of things we're getting co- um. Subscriptions for, right?
Educational programming, yes.
It's, okay, thank you. So the second part of that question has to do with the facilitators. So on the meeting today that I was on, um, I guess that's, that's a huge concern. That maybe because I don't understand it correctly. So now I'm in my classroom and I'm teaching and I've got that group that's at home on Monday, Tuesday, but they're gonna be coming in Thursday, Friday. Whatever. Who? Like, am I, am I gonna be in charge of the kids on the Google Meet screen and the kids in front of me?
Teachers have asked to do that. Certainly, I'm not gonna force a facilitator on anyone. But our design has a facilitator on the screen while the teacher is just teaching their class. So that, you know, even when I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to you, I'm engaging in a meeting, and I need Mrs. Pruitt to take a look at the chat for questions. Mrs. Pruitt is my facilitator.
Okay. So that could, it could be a, it could be a para, it could be a, um. In, uh, interventionist, it could be a, even a specialist, maybe, I don't know. But it could be, so do we think?
Yeah, it could be me and Chrissy.
I heard that today. I was like, ooh. Alright, so I just, cause not every. Classroom or every pod or every team or every department has powers, like.
Right.
I just, I don't know. I, to me, it's very overwhelming.
Teachers also have uh, time for lunch. They have prep time. They have time. Um, where kids are gonna be working on assignments. And so just like, I mean, you used a para as an example, just like a para may work a few periods in one class and then go to another class. A facilitator can serve more than one room. Don't have to sit next to that teacher all day long. Because the teacher's not gonna be on the computer. For, as we've explained before, for four hours straight with students staring at them. Students are gonna be engaged in activities and assignments. We don't teach where students stare at a teacher's face for four hours. We don't do that. And so we're certainly not going to. Have that happen on a screen. In any classroom, in any given day, in any level. Students are s- there, there may be a lecture. Honestly, current standards call for fifteen to twenty minutes of that, no matter how old the child is. And then we move to group work or partner work, which is gonna be on the devices now. Um, you could have a student who's online at home. Working with a student who's in the classroom. Cause they're doing it together online. And, or you could have them, as I said, reading something, writing something, completing an activity. Um, question and answer period, watching a video. Just as in a regular classroom. Uh, it, it, what people need to do is just think of what happens in a classroom. And think of it happening on a screen. It's not going to be different. We don't. Change the way we're teaching in that sense. There will be a lot of changes, of course. But no one's going to talk to students for four hours straight. Nobody does that now, and they're not gonna do that on a computer screen.
Okay. Uh, okay. But I was just thinking, because the day was shorter, that the kids would be with their teacher. But I, I, I see what you're saying. I do. I g- I do get it. Because aren't we looking at the specialists being. Uh, remote after, you know, when they get home, at, you know, in the afternoon or whatever, they'll, they'll have their music and their. Uh, phys ed or art or whatever it is that's special for them, right?
It depends on the school. There are some more high-risk music classes than others. So this, every school might not necessarily have them all remotely, but certainly courses like chorus. Um, you know. Things that have, we all know have been identified as higher risk. They can do those remotely.
Wanna share that, um. If this is approved, the next step are the school-based plans. And so the school, the schools are already beginning to work on their own plans. That will be provided to staff and families. And that will have more specifics around. Um, around some of like how music or P E or art will be delivered. Because it is more specific to grade spans and like Dr. Caroll just said, certain particular classes. So that, those sort of details will be presented and made public. But from a district perspective, we've been talking about those at the grade span meetings. And that's where now the work begins with developing the plans at, at the um, school-based level.
Right, you have to remember, we're talking about a district perspective plan right now. But very classroom-specific conversations are happening in subgroups. Um, but those are not ready for presentation yet. But they are. Successfully taking place.
Alright, and you may have already, I, I, you may have already talked about this, but if a teacher. Can't come back to school for whatever reason, and basically health safety or whatever. They can teach remotely. To their class. From their home, correct? Like they're.
I don't know. Uh, every case is individual. I could never answer about a personnel issue on some. On a hypothetical person because it's. We have six hundred employees. It could be very different for every person.
Alright, so I'm a second grade teacher. I feel compromised. I know I can't go into the building. I am. I don't, you know, I'm not showing any symptoms, but I'm afraid that I might. Am I allowed to teach from my. On Google Meet with my remote learners and the kids that would be in school? And my facilitator would be. The person in charge of my classroom when I'm not there?
I don't know that. We have not bargained any of this with the union yet. I can't, I can't talk about something that we haven't impact bargained.
Okay, I was just, it just came into my head. Um. And then another survey is going out, correct? I believe you said next Friday or next Thursday?
The communications team is working on a survey. Um, Jackie is actually on the, the, that um, committee. They believe that they're gonna have a survey ready for next Friday. Uh, they're gonna show me the questions on Thursday. I completely trust that they're able to. Come up with um, excellent questions to determine what we need to know about student return. Um, based on the whatever plan um, is determined by the school committee. We just need to know what plan it is before we send out the survey. So they're working on the questions, but based on. You know, they didn't wanna finish it because if you determine you need us to go in another direction, it's an entirely different survey question. So. Um, they plan on sending that out on Friday. A week from tomorrow.
Michelle's on that committee too.
Sorry, Michelle. Jackie was in my line of sight. Sorry about that.
Okay, um, alright, well, I, I, no further questions right now for me and. Okay, uh, Jackie, it's your turn.
The, um, Michelle, Nancy Donahue and I are working on. The questions this week, um, a little next week, and then we hope to have a draft for the communications. Meeting on Thursday, so we'll go forward from there. Um, I have a couple of uh, questions. Um. Chrissy just mentioned the school-specific plans, and I was wondering if you had a ballpark on when those would be available?
What happens tonight? It's very difficult because we're being asked to do something based on not knowing what it is. As you can imagine, I can't ask everybody to get down to the granular level of scheduling cohorts, for example, if we're not gonna go with a particular model. And so as soon as possible, right? Because, believe me, all of us wanna know exactly what's happening. And so we're gonna push out information very quickly. I mean, if you just look at how much has been accomplished in the amount of time. Thus far. Redesigned education in three different ways. Three different ways that will work. So I, I'm confident it will be quick, but I could never give you a date because. If you tell us go back to the drawing board, it's gonna be far different than if we move forward with the proposal, for example.
Okay, um, I am, I'm just requesting that when those are. I know they're not finalized, but when they're ready to go out, that, um. The school committee gets a chance to see them before they're released, in case we have any questions. Um. If there's just any additional information we may need, cause parents do reach out to us and. I wanna make sure that we're clear on the protocols as well for each building. Um, and my understanding is that you're gonna be developing, communications committee is gonna be developing. School-specific FAQs, is that correct?
Yes, because every facility is a little bit different. So for example. The procedures for dismissal are gonna be very different depending on the school, the age level, the physical structure of the building, the entrances, exits, and so forth.
And that, and those were kind of my questions, and whether those would be addressed, like the. How social distancing is working when you arrive and when you depart and.
Oh, yes, of course.
Yet within six feet, how are they making sure the kids are doing what they need to do and all of that, um.
Information now for the operations of schools. It's going to be the same exact thing. We know that we need to provide guidance to our staff. On how to conduct business. So they're, I mean, it's not that we're not. Creating this for families as well, but we're creating this for staff so that we can have a successful experience. So obviously, they need to know in advance of performing any of these tasks.
Sure. Um, and I know I had um, emailed David about bike racks, cause a parent had asked whether. Um, our schools have enough bike racks to accommodate people that, kids that may now be riding their bikes instead of taking the bus.
Are you ask, I'm sorry.
Do you know?
Yes, of course. Yes, it's part of the grant and we already have made, um. We've already looked into the cost, I mean, we're just not purchasing them yet because we don't know the plan. A lot is on hold. Because we don't know the plan. So there are a lot of things that POs are written, uh, drafts are written, um, FAQs. I have many, many FAQs that are ready to be posted. We're, we're just, um, again, waiting for. Uh, direction.
Okay, and the remote plan that you're submitting to the state. Do, do you go down to the detail about like whether teachers would be doing this from their classrooms or their homes have? Or is that not the level of detail you get into for the report?
No, it depends on the safety. If it's because, um. You know, this is a concern, or some children, you know, it, I can't even give scenarios. It depends if it's safe, where I'm not going to have employees in a building. That is compromised. And I, I don't mean to sound so surprised, but. There are some things that I. Just assume. People realize, but I can't. I have to be very clear, and I understand that. Um, if it's safe, but we don't want a lot of people, then the staff will be there. If it's not safe, no one will be there. In March, our custodians weren't there. We literally locked the doors and walked away from the buildings for weeks.
Okay. Um. Let's see, so. Um, I know. I know why the goal is to get every student back in the building for the kids in high-risk groups, as you said, the children who need special services. Um, I think there, and I think you mentioned this as well, there are children that don't fall into those groupings. That have had a really tough time over the past several months. And I feel that being back in school, even part-time with the restrictions. Um, you know, there's gonna be restrictions on interacting with other kids, but. I mean, my personal feeling is even if they're there in a classroom around other children with their teacher in front of them. Interacting with them in whatever way is possible. Um. They're gonna be in a learning environment, they're gonna be out of their homes, they're gonna be in some sort of routine, and they're gonna be connecting with their peers in some way, and I just. To me, I think that's critical right now. Um. I am relieved, however, that in your hybrid model, it's. Three weeks minimum because. I also, as the other members have stated. Um, I feel that we need time to see not only how the protocols are working, but how. The health metrics are in the state in Easton. In Easton, you know, as Caroline said, they're low now, that the um, infection rate is low. Um, as they are in their surrounding towns other than one. Um, but those things can change quickly. So, um. I'm glad that you had um, revised that slightly. Also, I mean, I know that was always the plan, but revised the wording, so I. Feel more comfortable. Um, I do think that, um. I agree that we should be meeting more often. I think that we need to be able to. We need to be able to look at all that information on a continual basis, not just to see whether it's okay to. Go to the next phase, but just to see if it's okay to stay in the phase that we're in. Um. You know, there are a lot of unknowns still, as Caroline had mentioned. And I know I completely trust our administrative team. I know that you wouldn't do anything that you didn't feel. Was safe and in the best interests of not only our children, but our, our, our teachers and our staff. But as Michelle had said, this is, this is a very heavy decision on us. It is really weighted on our shoulders. And we've been on calls with hundreds of school committee members and they all feel the same way. This is a. A very. Difficult decision for a lot of reasons. And so I think it's important that we stay. In the front lines of getting the information and being able to review the data and. Being able to talk about our decisions and whether it's the way to continue. Um, I know that's.
We encourage your guidance. We're looking for your guidance. Um, Chrissy and I are on twenty-four seven, so you name when it is and we're there.
Okay, I mean, I know it's frustrating. It's frustrating for families not to be able to plan. It's frustrating for staff. It's frustrating for us. Um. But at this point in time, I support the hybrid model. Um, I feel, as others had said, that we're giving families options. Um, and they can do what they feel is best for their family. I know. At this moment in time, I'm sending my son back. He needs to be back in school. I have seen changes over the past five months that have me concerned and. Uh, he's one of the children that needs to be back. I have absolutely no doubt on that.
Personally, I would send my children. I would monitor it very closely. Uh, I would not follow blindly. I would be asking a lot of questions, which we encourage. Um, I would be sending my children.
I also just wanna share that I, I will be sending my children. In fact, my middle school-aged child who does not particularly like school. Has shared with me that he wants to go back full-time. He doesn't care if it's a, if it's a hybrid model, he doesn't go to Easton, but he wants to go back full-time. So, um, it just, that's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, Jackie, thank you. And Jen, you are up next.
Hey, um. I'll start with, um, that. Hearing the updates. Um, that have been made to the presentation, especially the clarification around remote and the acknowledgement that, that it could very well likely. Um, be much longer than a minimum of three weeks. and the acknowledgement that, that it could very well likely, um, be much longer than a minimum of three weeks realistically. Hi, I'm sorry. Yes, hybrid. Yep, yep. Could realistically be, uh, you know, months or the whole year. Um, I think is a very realistic appraisal. So I appreciate, um, that being said. So my, one of my biggest areas of concern is for the families for whom hybrid will cause a childcare hardship. Um, so I know we went through, you know, the presentation a couple of weeks ago with just, you know, tons and tons of, was it last week? Whenever it was, tons and tons of information. Um, and we, we briefly touched on the possibility of community partnerships um, to help with childcare options for those families. I think especially if, if realistically hybrid could be in place for an extended period of time, um, I can see many families who might've been able to cobble together uh, a few weeks worth of childcare options to be able to be home with their younger students and helping them uh, being in a really difficult position now. So, um, I'm wondering if this is one of those things that, one of those conversations that's waiting for our decision, uh, or if we've had any feedback from community partners like Maplewood or the Y, which, uh, I know both have been running, um, successful group care settings. Uh, as far as I know, without any incidents or outbreaks, um, for, for many, many months. So do we have any information from them as to whether or not they would be able to, you know, provide some, some school age, school day programming for parents who cannot be home with their students during a hybrid model?
So first I would like to, I would like to thank you for, um, and, and several of you for acknowledging the clarification. It's very important for us, um, that people who are watching know that we are hearing what they're saying and we're responding to their feedback. And so if we need to adjust, clarify, uh, answer questions, um, I am, I am glad to hear that you have noticed these things because I think it's important for people to know that we are not, um, you know, yes, we're busy, but not to the point that we are not, um, hearing, understanding and incorporating feedback from people. So, uh, so I appreciate those observations. Um, we have actually met with both the Y and Maplewood. Um, they have always been extraordinary partners with us. Uh, the YMCA actually, um, is tailoring their plan to the Easton Public Schools. Um, they are opening, they're, they're, um, emptying the equipment from their Bowser Street facility. They have a large floor-to-ceiling, um, separator and they are actually, um, they're going to work with our schedule for cohorts A and B. They are going to separate our cohorts A and B. Um, we are going to transport children. We are going to, we're working to, um, provide breakfast and lunch from our food service program at the site. They are also offering services or have, um, offered to offer, offered services to parents whose students are working remotely. And, uh, perhaps can't do that at home to facilitate that opportunity for people. And so they will have staff members who are working with students who are on remote devices. So whether they're hybrid or remote, first thing in the afternoon, they're going to be working on remote. There are children though, who may be there for the day because they are remote learners and they will have people there to facilitate their learning throughout the day. They can take 70 to 80 students. We've also spoken to Maplewood and they also are working with us. They are also going to have a program. Uh, just for a second, sorry, I'll get back to, to the YMCA. They are also going to make use of, um, some spaces in the schools for before and after-school care, um, as they have done in the past. Again, with all of the safety precautions in place. Um, I think, uh, you know, I, I think I've said this before, but I could give you specific examples. When we have worked with the YMCA, that is obviously a, a national organization. Their guidelines are often more strict than the Department of Education. There are things that we do, um, you know, I'll say, well, please make use of the Garden at Parkview when they're after, no, we can't do that. There aren't signs labeling every plant. There aren't, you know, the things that they require that we don't require as a school system. So, uh, we're always, always very confident working with them and they're extremely responsive to our needs. And so we did go over some of the safety precautions and they're surpassing anything we have. Uh, we told them we would give them the use of electrostatic sprayers. They said they already had them. I mean, they have everything that we have. And so we feel very comfortable with that plan. Um, and as far as Maplewood, they also are taking students. They're not doing before and after-school care. However, I'll let Chrissy give you the details because she had a, the, the lengthy conversation, um, with Mr. Pinstein. And he, um, was extremely cooperative in terms of, um, providing care for students. I just can't remember off the top of my head how many students they could accommodate. Chrissy?
Sure. So they can accommodate about 50 to 60. That, that's not totally firm yet. They're looking into it. And they are doing exactly what the Y is offering. They are catering to the Easton model. Um, he in fact asked if the, if it was, you know, it to, he, he and I spoke about keeping the cohorts apart on Wednesdays. And he's, um, very committed to that. Um, and as far as the before and after-school care, they, they do provide it, but they provide it on-site. So that is something that, um, yeah, they provide it on-site, not, not in the schools.
Correct.
Yes. But they're, they've been wonderful. Both, both, and I have follow-up conversations with both of them next week um, to kind of hash out some more details, but they have really both been absolutely fabulous to work with.
Extraordinary. And we did pursue that, um, Jen, because we know how critical the childcare issue is. We want to make sure that our children are appropriately, um, supervised. And so we did pursue that to make sure that this model would work.
Okay, great. Yeah. Cause I know that was, um, it, it seemed, some of the feedback I saw seemed that the hybrid model was, was even more, um, even more of a pain point than, uh, than full remote would be for some families, for, for whatever reason. Um, you know, maybe, you know, just the difficulty with, with splitting a week's worth of childcare. Um, so, um, I think that's hugely helpful and I hope, uh, I hope the families who need it, um, will be able to take advantage of those offerings. So Chrissy, did you want to?
I, I just wanted to add on that both Maplewood and the Y have had experience this summer working with large amounts of students through their camps. So.
Successfully.
Very successfully. So Maplewood, in fact, when, when we talked about a Wednesday where it would be both groups together, um, so they would, both, both organizations would limit numbers based on, um, based on what the Wednesday would look like, um, with the, with the quantity of students. But they, they have very strict regulations about keeping students apart and keeping one group apart from another. Um, their staff have, have been trained in all of this already. Um, however, just so you're aware, we will be providing, um, professional development for their staff, similar to what parents will be receiving on how to support their, their, the students. Um, and any further professional development that they're looking for on ways to support the kids, we would absolutely, um, entertain supporting them with that.
Okay, great. Uh, second question would be if it, if it looks like the hybrid model is working well and is something that we want to, um, extend for quite, quite a while, uh, would there be consideration for trying to extend the day to add in lunch and, and extend basically to the full normal school day, a sort of a bridge between, you know, phase three and phase four? If, if we really determine that we're not quite ready to try to get everybody back in the building for whatever reason, health metrics and, um, and, and the combo is working, but you know, we could maybe extend the day to the full day. Is that something that has been discussed or thought about?
Yeah. Um, so this model actually provides the flexibility to add things slowly, right? Remember the, the dry mixture to the wet mixture analogy? And so we could even add after-school extracurriculars. We could add, um, lunch. We could add, um, the outdoor recess. We, there are many things that when it's safe only, we can add elements to the school day to gradually increase to the next phase. Absolutely. Okay. Oh, I want to add by the way, that I was asked about sports, participating in sports for remote students. Uh, I did add that to the FAQs because I felt that many people would want to know that information. The commissioner said to us that it was, quote, unlikely that remote students would be able, uh, to participate in sports. That is not a district policy and it is not yet a state policy. Uh, but I felt obliged to let people know something that I knew they would want to hear about. And so, uh, if anybody has questions, I, unfortunately I have zero information about that because it is not our policy. I have no, um, conjecture about the reason why. We were just told that it was unlikely. It was repeated twice and certainly, um, they can, uh, reach out to the commissioner's office perhaps, but we have absolutely no information about that. That is not our policy. Um, if it's a state or MIAA ruling, then we would be obliged to enforce it, but that is nothing that we are pursuing at the district level.
Okay. Uh, on that line, um, uh, was that just, was that specific to sports? Or did he indicate that would be, um, for other extracurricular activities too? I mean, who knows if we'll even, you know, be in a position to offer things like, you know, drama or any type of music ensembles or whatever, um, outside of school at some point. Okay.
Right now, um, for example, musical theater and chorus are not allowed indoors.
Yeah.
So there are, there are some restrictions on certain other activities. Um, in this particular conversation, he specifically said sports.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I have some questions about, uh, buses, but we can talk about those in, um, when, when those come up in items 11 and 12. And I think that covered my questions. Everything else had been covered by, by the rest of the committee. So. And, um, you know, I, I'll state that I went, I've been not looking forward to this meeting or vote frankly. Um, it's a terrible decision to have to make. I feel like, uh, any decision we make, um, is, is not a great one. Um, and I'm kinda, you know, really frustrated that our national policy has put us in the position that we are, um, where we're not able to make plans with greater confidence. But I feel like, um, based on all the work that we've done, the guidance from the state, uh, all of the working groups this year, um, that this plan a, as, as it is right now, offers the greatest amount of flexibility to families. Um, a, and you know, my two children are ones who, uh, who would like to return to school and my plan is to send them, um, to, you know, start the year off that way. I think, uh, not only would they like to go, they would definitely benefit, um, from having some component of in-person learning mixed with, um, an improved, um, uh, remote learning experience, which it sounds like is well underway. And I know a lot of planning is going into, um, I think the, the synchronous learning will be a huge improvement over last year, um, and much more effective for students and hopefully more rewarding for, uh, for faculty as well. So.
All right. Thanks Jen. Uh, one more item. Okay.
Sorry. I, I just want to highlight, um, along that, that line, uh, it's in the plan. It was in the presentation, but I, I feel that it's extremely important to emphasize again, is that the first few weeks of school are for, um, I am strongly, strongly encouraging relationship building with students and the use of the technology. Those are two things that are going to be critical for success in a remote plan. And so, um, Pete, I'm asking that people understand that what they see happening in the first few weeks of school by our professionals is intentional and it's for a very good reason. And we can discuss that further at some point, but, uh, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that it isn't, it, it is purposeful to, um, to posture us for the highest level of success in the school year.
Okay. Um, if you're sending a question into the Q and A, please state your name and your address so that we can, uh, address your question in the Zoom meeting. And Chrissy, you said you had some questions. So.
I do.
We'll get started.
Uh, the first question is from Kelly Morton, 104 Gaslight. Is it possible to have a remote-only teacher for each grade? Or is it a possibility that the regular teacher teaches the remote students after the in-person kids depart for the day? Alicia, you're muted.
What was the second part of that?
Um, or is it a possibility that the regular teacher teaches the remote students after the in-person kids depart for the day?
Uh, so the in-person after students leave for the day is for about an hour or an hour and a half. Um, so that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be sufficient for in-person learning. Um, having one student for every grade, uh, you have to remember that it's only grades PK to five that are, um, one teacher per grade. Um, and we may have zero students in third grade or one student in fifth grade, for example. We can't designate a teacher for one student, just as an example. We don't know that yet because we're, we're still working on the schedules. Um, once you start getting into secondary, uh, there are many, many different subjects, courses, certifications. It's not a, a, an 11th grade teacher or an eighth grade teacher. There are several for every grade level. So that would be, that would be so many staff that we would have probab, we probably wouldn't have enough for in-person learning frankly. Um, and we would probably have too many serving remote, remote students. So we can't actually, I can't actually know that until we look at the schedules and the numbers and the staff. And then we'll be able to, um, plan that more appropriately. But based on the baseline data we have and the anecdotal information that I have been given by people reaching out, um, we don't feel like that would work with the numbers that we have right now.
And she is saying, sorry, I meant K to five.
Uh, it really, it's the same answer because we just don't know how many students are going to even be part of remote yet. So.
Um, I have.
I just want to remind people that we did have several positions lost this year. So we are at a minimum for staffing and, uh, what we don't want to do is compromise the safety of anyone in school by offering really, really small remote learning groups of three or four students. So it's, it's very critical that we have enough staff for supervision in the school. Um, and the remote classes, of course, will be, um, will be, uh, similar. They'll be, they, they won't be overpacked with kids, for example. That's another thing we don't want. We don't want one grade to have 40 kids in it and a teacher trying to work with them at the same time.
I'm assuming that the next question is also from Kelly Morton. It first said anonymous attendee. Um, and when I asked for the name and address, this was the only one that came back. So I hope that it is from Kelly Morton, 104 Gaslight. Oh, it's not. Okay. All right. Then I won't read it until somebody responds. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, Lauren, your question was answered. Okay. There's another question that didn't, they didn't put their name. It says Paige with no sound. So I will wait until I hear, um, if there's a name that I can read the question. And that's it right now.
I also want to point out that for, um, people that have asked for a similar, um, reason as the, the last question, we do have to make sure that the teachers that are, um, all, all staff really can reasonably anticipate how many students they're going to be serving at, serving at any one time. And so if a student for any reason, uh, this is another way that this plan is flexible. If a student for any reason feels as though, um, if they're, if they're ill or if they, you know, we hope this doesn't happen, but they break their leg, something very unrelated to COVID and they're, and they're home, they can engage in remote learning, which is better than ever before. Uh, if they are concerned about being ill or if they've had an exposure, but they're asymptomatic, they can all learn remotely from home. So in a moment's notice, they can go from being in the classroom to being at home when traditionally they would have missed school for a period of time. It is important to note, however, because we have so much planning for in-person and we have to, um, we must secure, um, the safety of everyone in the buildings. We cannot have a remote student just show up at school at a particular time. We are going to have designated points at which a student who is learning remotely may determine they want to go to in-person learning, but each school will determine that. It would likely be a marking period, but our schools are different. Some schools have quarters, some schools have trimesters. And so that's why it's going to be part of the building-based plan when a student who is learning. When a student who is learning remotely comes to class. I'm sure anyone, you don't need to be a teacher or a professional to understand that um a service provider. To know that if you have six kids in front of you and you have uh seven kids remotely. All seven can't just show up the next day without you anticipating that. Um there needs to be time for planning and um preparation of materials that um. They may be making use of, preparation of online work and in-person work. Uh where they maybe were going to take the class that day, maybe they were gonna take them to another part of the building and it won't be big enough if they have more students, things like that. So it's just logistically not possible for people to just move at will from remote to in-person. We just wanna repeat that. Um there will be opportunities throughout the year, but it will be up to the building when that takes place so that um staff can prepare.
Uh I do have four more questions. Um Jen Antaby, five Judith Road. Would you be open to helping families who choose remote learning for their children connect with the other families who've also choose, chosen to learn remotely?
Um I can't answer that yet because um honestly, I'm not sure what we're gonna have available for manpower. Uh certainly, we can um. Help advertise any groups that wanted to potentially meet learning groups, but. Um honestly, I think parent groups do quite well um with social media platforms and meeting up with one another and. I'm not sure if that just means coordinating something or in some, or or offering some type of service. Um I I'm not sure if there's, if you are reading that different, Chrissy. Um I I can't um, I can't really say until everyone's been scheduled and we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Right, and we can't necessarily put out people's names with privacy laws that we also have to think about.
Yeah, we would never send, for example, a list of emails of people who are remote to someone. That's illegal, uh so we could never do that.
Um, right.
I I'm not sure if that's what was being asked, but it's a, it's a fair question and I understand why you would ask it, but it's just not lawful to do that.
Um Jenny Bastian, forty-three Concerto Court. Is a, if a student is fully remote, will teachers be doing the same relationship building with them during the first few weeks?
Absolutely. It's absolute, like full-time remote?
Yes.
It doesn't matter whether it's hybrid or remote, yes, it's very important because um it's the remote students that. Uh it's because of remote learning that that we think it's so important to front load that the, that at the beginning of the year. So yes, absolutely.
I will also share with you that at the K to five level, we have been talking a lot with the physical education teachers. And having them allow, uh having them provide time throughout the day to provide mask breaks and movement breaks for some of our students. And if that's occurring in person, then that also provides the teacher with the opportunity. To have some individual time with the remote learners, so I just wanted to share that also. Where everyone's very conscious of, just like if a, if a classroom teacher has two groups. Um at our two centers going on at a time, the teacher wants to make sure that she's checking or he's checking in with both groups. And that has been very uh vivid in our conversations in our um in our working groups for teaching and learning. Um Valerie, Valerie Frank, one fifty-eight Elm Street. Is there any way we can make some recommendations on types of masks that are acceptable, for instance, to apply, et cetera? I realize it's not enforceable, but my older child is in a private school. And the doctors who developed their plan emphasized the type of mask ma- that the type of mask matters. For instance, a lot of kids prefer bandet, bandet, bandanas. Open at the bottom and that is not safe in terms of limiting the spread of droplets.
Yep, our nurses are currently working on mask requirements. We, we are gonna have all that information for parents, um. But we have, obviously, we have our nurses working on that.
Um I was looking to chime in here that we just got a um. A new uh policy from M A S C about uh face masks and coverings. And we are going to have that on our next uh meeting next Thursday, so we'll be talking about.
Right, it's gonna be school committee policy, yep.
Thank you.
Um so I have, I do have a bunch of questions here and I'm just wondering, uh. Chairperson DeLuca, if you would rather us wait to do this during open comments or public comment?
Are they involving the, the hybrid remote?
Is there more questions about details of the plan?
Yeah, so why, why don't we wait until um public comment then, please? Thank you. So that's it, Chrissy?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just um looking.
I'll give you ten.
Yeah, I I think that these can be answered during public comment.
Okay. Alright then, are there any other comments or questions or anything from board members, please? Alright. Alright, so we are going to vote on. Uh vote to approve a Dix, a district plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So I need a motion, and who would like to do the motion?
I'll do the motion.
Okay, Jackie.
I'll make a motion to approve for the district plan twenty to twenty twenty-one. Um the hybrid plan is proposed by Dr. Cabral.
And I need a second.
O'Neil, second.
Okay, thank you. So as you vote, you're voting, you're either voting for the hybrid model or against the hybrid model. Which if you vote against the hybrid model, I would assume that means you're voting for the remote model, correct?
Can I, can I just clarify, so are we, is, is the plan that we're voting on? The starting with the remote model, or is it adopting the proposed multi-phase plan?
The plan is the multi-phase, five-phase plan.
Okay.
So we, so we're not voting on hybrid or remote?
Well, if, accepting that, my understanding is accepting that plan includes opening the school year with the hybrid option at phase three.
That is correct. It has remote in it, it has in-person in it, it has hybrid in it, but we're calling it. The hybrid because the bulk of it, or when students, on day one of school, it, it is a hybrid on day one of school for students.
And it's not, there's not a timetable to go full and all in. It's as we see going forward.
It's, it's, it's based on cases, science, Board of Health, absolutely. All of, all of it is. The reason that it's phases is for that purpose. The reason we're not just bringing you a plan uh is because we want to be able to move forward and backward based on the needs of the district.
I also just wanna note that the, if you're approving it phase two, which includes the ten professional days for teachers. That would then warrant um the vote for the change in calendar, which is coming up.
Okay. So is the professional development, that's included in the district plan, correct?
Yes, that's phase two.
Yeah, okay. Alright then, so all those in favor of approving the district plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Which includes starting the school year with the hybrid model, am I saying this correctly? Alright, so all those in favor, uh let's, uh we need to do this verbally, so go ahead.
O'Neil, yes.
Um Durant, yes.
DeLuca? Sorry, I don't know what to do. DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Star, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry I made it dramatic, but I, I am.
Nancy, we all feel that way. We all feel.
I know, we all do. I know, I know.
And we do too. You know, we, Dr. Cabral and I also, and and all of the people in the committees, this is, it's a terrible situation that we're in. And um but we wanna try and do what's best for all students.
Well.
And we feel, we feel confident that this does that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the fact that we.
We, then we pivot.
Right, right, that's the thing, is this, if, if this doesn't work, if it doesn't make sense based on the data. We can change it.
This is, this is, most.
I just.
Don't have phases. This has phases so that we can move if necessary.
It's just such a, I know, this is such an unknown, this cold COVID thing. And every day, and Caroline knows this because she's reading everything that there is. Um it's just the unknown, and we do have to keep an eye on the science and. I would, I would be so upset, any child, student. Faculty member, staff, if anybody ever got it at school, that would just crush us, so. Um alright, we're gonna do this safely and we're gonna do it together. Okay.
Nancy, Nancy, could, could I just mention something? I mean, it's also possible that come September first. The metrics are not in our favor and we can't begin with the remote, I mean with the uh hybrid. So I, I mean, we don't even know for sure what's gonna happen because as I keep repeating endlessly. We won't determine that, the coronavirus will, so.
It, it is, yes, and that's why we need to be nimble, but I will tell you, I will, I will guarantee you. I am telling you based on evidence, that there is one guarantee, and that is that some of our students are struggling. They're suffering from suicidal ideation, they are being neglected, and they need us. That is guaranteed, that is happening right now, so that is one guarantee in this situation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um next up, approval to change the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one start date on the school calendar. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Uh based on the five-phase plan, we have staff returning to school. On August, uh excuse me, September first and. Having uh an introductory day followed by ten professional development days, which takes them through September sixteenth. And so the start date for all students would be September seventeenth.
Okay.
We are leaving the two professional development, the designated professional development days in the calendar, uh November election day. And another in January, we're leaving those in place right now.
Okay.
At, at, on those dates, so we're not changing any other dates, and because the commissioner allowed for ten less um. Days required for time on learning, it does not change the last day of school either.
Okay. Well, any um questions or comments on the school calendar? Okay, um all those in favor, oh. I make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one start date for September sixteenth for students of Eastern Public Schools.
September seventeenth.
September seventeenth, I'm so sorry, go ahead. Do I have a second?
Star, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you so much. Um, okay. Personnel changes, retirement custodian at Center School, Dr. Cabral.
Yes, we do have a retirement, um I believe you have a letter.
I do not have a letter.
Uh Lynn, can you tell me if that was chosen to not be read or um if we maybe should wait so that it can be read?
Or you could read it if you have it, Dr. Cabral.
It was in the um packet in the shared folder.
Alright, hold on, let me uh, one second, let me go to my shared folder, sorry. When I went there today, I didn't see it, so um hold on, if everybody wouldn't mind waiting one second. This'll be a good time to fill up your wine glass. Okay, um.
Sparkling water.
Sparkling water. Alright, one, one second.
You know all the money I've saved on for you guys' water?
I can imagine.
Okay.
Those, those shared folders are tricky. It's easy to miss something.
Yeah, so shared drive, right? Hold on, sorry. Um no, hold on. I don't know if I can get to it. Hmm, alright, um I can't seem to find it right now, so um.
I think it's buried.
I, I just, I, do, does anybody else have it that they could read it?
It's so tiny on my, yes, I could read it.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? Okay.
Yes, please.
Uh it just says, I have submitted my retirement papers to the Bristol County Retirement Board this week. I write this letter to announce my retirement from the Eastern Public Schools. Uh as day custodian at Center, at Center School effective Friday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty, thank you, Vera Miller. Miller or Milner, I could.
Miller.
Miller, okay, there's only one L, so I wondered, day custodian, Center School, sorry, it's, it's really tiny on my phone. That's it.
So I don't know if uh if any of you know Vera, she's wonderful. I looked at the participants, I don't see that she's here. Um I would request that she raise her hand if she is here so she can be recognized, however. Um she is just uh uh an amazing worker, but a phenomenal person. And Vera is one of our custodians that was um a van driver for several years. And so she worked out of the, uh out of central office, and we had the pleasure of seeing her very frequently. And uh working with her, and so um we give her a hearty congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. And she will be greatly missed by the district.
Alright.
Um if I may just add that she is somebody that's always gone, gone above and beyond. And when she was a van driver, gosh, did her students love her, so I just, she will be greatly missed, but congratulations.
Alright, I make a motion to accept Vera Miller's retirement with regret?
Wiseman, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay. Discussion and potential vote on the pay and ride program and also discussion and potential vote to change the bus routes to a two-mile radius. As per state mandate, is this the order you wanna do these in or does it matter? Should they be flipped around? Does it matter? It doesn't matter, right?
No, I think they need to be done together, actually.
Yeah, okay.
So we are, in order to reduce our ridership and ensure safe riding on the buses and vans. We are um recommending that we move to the state mandated two miles. We've been very fortunate in past years that we have been able to bus students who are closer than that distance. However, we um again, to make sure that we are able to accommodate all students. That we are legally responsible for transporting to school, we recommend that we suspend the pay and ride program and the. Increase the ridership to two miles. The state law also um allows for us to not bus any students from grade seven to twelve. We are not recommending that at this time. If we get to a point that the ridership is not, we are not able to provide transportation safely. It is really the, the only other option we have to consider, but we are not recommending that at this time. We feel as though it's important for every student that needs transportation to have that option, and so. Um we are still going to be busing students in the Moreau Hall and Center neighborhoods. Because we, those are uh dangerous um streets that they're on. And we don't wanna encourage students to walk or ride unless their parents can supervise them very closely, of course. Um we have also discussed grant funds for the buses. Uh not the buses, the um bike racks, excuse me, the bike racks. And of course, we all already have wonderful uh walking paths around the main campus where most of our students will be biking and walking. So we believe we have multiple options for people to exercise, whether they wanna ride the bus. They wanna make use of personal transportation, walking or uh riding bikes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Jen?
Sure, so with, so currently.
Sure, so with, so currently, the options are, you know, basically zero to one and a half miles is eligible for pay and ride. Right now, right? And then one and a half miles and uh, and beyond is, is available for free transportation. So if, how many, how many families were using or how many, how many riders did we have in the pay and ride program last year? Yeah.
Last year, um, three, grades three to five had eighty-seven students. Grade six to twelve had two hundred and twenty-one students. Is that correct, Marilyn?
Marilyn, you can unmute yourself. Or I can unmute you.
Oh, less than a hundred, Marilyn said.
Yeah, less than a hundred. Just, less than a hundred, um, three to, three to twelve.
Less than a hundred, three to twelve?
Yes, yeah, it was just, it was just, just under.
What are these figures, eighty-seven and two twenty-one?
How many, that's how many students would be affected if we increased the ridership from one and a half to two miles?
Thank you. Okay, so um, a, three hundred and eight students are gonna be affected from going to one and a half to two miles and uh, just under one hundred students will be affected by the pay and ride. Thank you, Marilyn.
Okay, so that's four hundred, approximately four hundred students total.
And because we are working in phases, this is also um, flexible.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was wondering if we could maybe.
We, if we, if we could uh, increase that or if we COVID disappears, we can change that, for example.
Yeah, I, I was wondering if we could, if we could maybe do something and, and kind of see how the numbers come in from the surveys as, as you know, families respond and, and hopefully, you know, commit to what their, what their plan is for the people who can't use personal transportation. I was wondering if we could maybe try something where maybe with, you know, within a mile, have no transportation option. And then from one to two, have the possibility of pay and ride if there's capacity after we get the information in, maybe make it on a first-come, first-served basis or case-by-case basis. I just feel like one mile to me seems like a totally reasonable self-transport distance without causing too much of an inconvenience and a hardship. Uh, but I, I think that one to two miles um, can be, you know, that, that can be quite a long walk, especially for little legs. If you don't have a parent who's able to provide private transportation, personal transportation. And, and then I'm concerned that um, families would be less likely able to find car pools or catch ride with neighbors if people are uncomfortable having members of another household in their car and, and this is just one of those areas where if at all possible, you know, after we meet our obligations of students two miles and further, if there's any room to accommodate families, I just don't, you know, I wanna do everything we can to remove one more barrier.
Barriers, absolutely.
We all do.
Yeah, sure. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend starting with it, only because if people pay for pay and ride, you have to presume they're gonna show up and ride the bus and you have to let them on the bus. And you know, if it becomes too much to do reimbursements would be um, problematic. However, if we do, as you know, we're planning to do, where we are seeing who who is coming on the bus and who is taking it regularly, we do counts all the time. Um, Lucini does counts for us of ridership, so we um, keep track of how many students ride it regularly. Then we could always add things, but it, it is very difficult to take it away once we allow them the ability to ride the bus. And in this instance, it could compromise safety. So if there are children standing at a bus stop, uh, we don't want a bus driver to have to make the choice of putting them on a bus that already has too many students or driving away and leaving them there. So um, we can certainly monitor the situation and if we find that it is consistently um, under because, and we also need the funding very much. So believe me, if we have an opportunity to generate revenue from park and ride, for example, we will definitely allow students to ride the bus. But it, going from one way to the other is easier than backwards. Um, so we do intend on monitoring that and if we can safely add students, it's kind of the same approach as the phases. We wanna start with the lowest amount possible and then build incrementally from that. We also understand that as the school year progresses, for example, more and more students get their driver's licenses or, or um, ride with siblings who get driver's licenses. So there's usually less ridership as we go through the year and we have more ability to accommodate students. Um, I would prefer to start with an abundance of caution because our buses that typically hold seventy to eighty students now have the capacity of holding twenty-seven. And we have no other, we have no additional buses. We have seventeen buses and we have no other buses. And so we don't really have much of an option if they're overfull.
Again, I just wanted to mention, it's one and a half miles now.
Yep.
So, so starting with one would actually be an improvement over the last many, many years. So I mean, I, I don't disagree with you.
No, right now, right now, pay and ride starts at zero. You could.
Okay, I misunderstood what you were saying, but.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
But I, but I will say, this busing has been an issue that has come up periodically and I remember it was one of the very first uh, issues that came up when I started on school committee twenty-seven years ago. Um, and I've, I've always advocated to keep as much busing as possible because, you know, there are those students that don't have access to cars, don't have access to, or, or aren't in a position to have a friend pick them up every day. And this tends to really apply almost more to the older kids. And it does affect attendance. And so um, and it affects, you know, the kids that are already disadvantaged, maybe financially or in other ways, are the ones who are most affected when we reduce busing.
It definitely typically affects our most vulnerable populations.
Yep.
But it is, it's, it's purely, we would not.
It's a pandemic.
It's purely. It's purely a safety issue at this point, nothing else.
Right, right. Well, now it's, now it's, as you say, safety, it's, it's, it's uh, you know, health and safety, which now sort of trumps some of the other things that are terribly important, but um, can't uh, outweigh our children's health.
And of course, we'll always work with individual students that have tremendous hardship. They just need to reach out to their school. It certainly would be on a case-by-case basis, but we, we never, we very much share the desire to remove any impediments to students coming to school.
What about the children who are eligible for busing? Is there a possibility that if enough parents do opt for the hybrid, that there would be a situation where the buses, too many children would be eligible? I mean, it's, it's tricky because sometime, you know, there, even on the survey, parents, some parents said they would bus, they would bring their children in the morning, but not the afternoon and vice versa. They'd be used to bus in the morning, but not the afternoon, vice versa. So it's it's gonna be very complicated to figure out, how do we not exceed twenty-seven students? Because.
Complication every single year. Um, it's something that we deal with every year.
But we've had the option of putting three kids in a seat for elementary, things like that. We just don't have options now, so it's going to be extremely complex.
Exactly. There is no wiggle room. We cannot exceed certain spaces.
If parents say they want to drive, or they plan to drive their children, but then their own circumstances change, but we have a full bus, what happens? Do people have to essentially commit to a particular course of action? I mean, children under a mile are, or a mile and a half or that, I mean, they are eligible for a bus. So if a parent, you know, if we were depending on parents to drive and then a percentage of those parents, um, for whatever reason, could no longer drive their students, do we have to, do we have some lead time or do we just, those children, just they're eligible, so the next day we have to figure out a way to get them to school? Is that how it happens?
There would be a problem and we would have to problem solve. So perhaps we would have to not allow students seven to twelve on buses, which is not something we wanna do. But we would have to problem solve.
But those are different runs, so yeah, I guess we'd have to find a way to collapse this, uh, the runs, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. So at this point, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we change the bus routes to two-mile radius and um, remove the pay and ride at this point with the option that things could change depending on numbers and the bus company. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those, Michelle, you have a question?
Well, I just noticed there is one question that has to do with busing. I don't know if we wanna address it or save it.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I didn't scroll down. The chat was, the Q and A was just stopped in one um, spot. When you ask parents about the, this is from Holly Butler, but she didn't, doesn't give her address. Should I read it anyway?
Yes, please.
Okay, when you ask parents about the bus, nobody expected pickup time to be noon.
Dr. Cabral?
That's a statement, not a question.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a second survey for exactly that reason. We have a plan now and so now we're able to do another survey.
So it will get more fine-tuned as we go along. I think at this point, we just need to make the broad decision of whether or not to reduce the two-mile radius and, or to make the radius two miles and not have the pay and ride at this moment.
Right, people need to know what they're answering on a survey. And so we're providing information so they can provide more detailed answers.
And then we can, then we can go case by case.
Yes.
From there, okay. Alright, do I have a second on my motion?
Wiseman, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, update on paraprofessional concession, Dr. Cabral.
So uh, you'll remember, when we thought it was the biggest problem in our world, we were discussing the woes of the budget uh, for FY twenty-one and we did approach all bargaining units to see if they would be willing to make concessions. The um, paraprofessional unit agreed to um, not come to school on the first day of school and not be paid. And uh, the school committee accepted that. However, as we looked at the schedules, we realized that the paraprofessionals at Oliver Ames High School have a half-day that day. And so the amendment is that they will not be coming in for that half-day and they will not be paid for that half-day. So that will be the concession. It has changed for Oliver Ames Paraprofessionals.
Any comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Do we have to vote on this?
I'm sorry, I just don't really consider that a concession, but go ahead.
Do we have to vote on this?
We do.
It's an update, you voted to accept it, so it is um.
It's just changing a whole day to a half-day.
Yeah, it's going to be less, it's going to, less um, money um, available in the budget.
Okay.
So it's a point of information.
But essentially, it's just, they're, they're normally paid for that day or that half-day and now they will not be, they're, they're, they're not going to be paid, but they're also not going to be there.
Correct, that was.
So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a trade, it's not exactly a concession, okay.
That was their, that was their offer.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're all set, we don't need to vote, it's just a point of information. Okay, thank you. Alright, and then the honoring DJ Henry will do it our next meeting, I believe. Um, I'll be in touch with Michelle as far as getting that together. Um, Dr. Cabral, COVID nineteen update. You basically updated us already.
Really, it's about fine-tuning the plan. There are many, many, many more details that are now going to be fast-tracked uh, that people will have more information about. And so I can assure you that any question somebody's asking a member of our staff has already addressed. We just have to get the information out. Because we're on a tight timeframe, we're trying to get that to paper as quickly as possible. And so people will see a lot of information coming out in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Uh, budget update?
So we, the only information that has changed from the state is that we did receive word that the chapter seventy funding is going to be level-funded. Um, it's not level service, it's level-funded. And so we do not yet know about circuit breaker or reimbursement or if transportation will be part of the circuit breaker. So we're still, we're not out of the woods, so to speak. In terms of what we have available in the FY twenty-one budget. Um, this is different than the, the COVID spending, that is all grant money. Uh, we have not spent any of our operational budget on anything to do with um, COVID response or preparing for school in the fall. Um, but just to get back to the FY twenty-one budget, we, it's just an update from the state. It's not gonna be a one-twelve. It's level service, so it's essentially whatever we got last year um, for the month is what we're getting this year for the month. Which of course is not level service. It's difficult because, you know, there are contractual raises and there are service um, contracts that have increased and um, we don't know what circum, circuit breaker is going to be reimbursed at. That's the special education reimbursement, so um, it's not, I don't actually have news in terms of a dollar figure, but that is just news coming from the government. There is not a state budget yet. Um, and in terms of um, the COVID uh, grant spending, Marilyn is actually going to uh, prepare for you next time in accounting of what has been spent so far. Uh, what we have received, what we've spent so far and what we still have available. Everything we have right now is only available until December. We are concerned about that for sure. But again, there is um, a proposal for a two-hundred-and-twenty-one billion-dollar federal stimulus package. And so we are actively going to pursue that, of course, if it, if it comes out. And that would be extremely, extremely helpful.
Thank you. Alright, public comment. Chrissy, go ahead with the question.
I think Jackie has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie, go ahead.
I just was wondering, I know we were waiting to hear about the technology grant. Did we hear anything about that yet?
No, they have told us. Chrissy had a, an observation about the deadlines coming from the department right now. I, it's understandable, of course, uh, but not one of them has actually been realized yet. And so this is um, another, uh, we have not heard about the technology grant. She has been in contact with the department and they have said that it is extremely complicated and they will get it, the information to us as soon as possible. We do have peer districts that have received the information, so we were concerned. But we have been assured that not all of the um, awards have been uh, given out yet. So we do not know yet if we receive that grant or for how much.
Thank you, thanks Jackie. Alright, um, Chrissy, go ahead with public comment, please, questions?
Okay. Uh, Lauren Loomis for Abbey Road. Can teachers have a Google Meet with the, with the fully remote-only kids prior to school to meet those kids?
Uh, that is going to be determined by the individual teachers at the individual schools. The teachers have ten days of professional development. I don't know, it would have to be part of their regular planning. Um, and I cannot guarantee that it will be taken away from their professional development. We are obligated to provide that to them and they, and they need it. There's, there's quite a lot of, for them to learn. I cannot, um, if a teacher does do that before we go back to school, that would be up to that individual teacher, but they certainly are not under any contract to do any, to do that at all.
And we are.
So you're aware, all of our staff um, love all of their students. Whether they're hybrid or remote or anything in between, they're gonna give just as much attention and care to every single student in their class. And so if there isn't. And so if there isn't an initial meeting, which they may decide to do that, but if there isn't, I am quite confident that they will. Make it up in a different way, and they will meet every student and they will build those relationships with everyone.
And also, so the community knows, um, tomorrow, an email will be going out to staff to establish the eighth committee. Which now that the, now that this is approved, which will be the Professional Development Committee. Um, to determine those ten professional development days. Um, okay. Elizabeth Starr, eleven Baltic Avenue, will Chromebooks still be offered to students as needed? It was so awesome that we had that. You're muted.
Sorry. We are anticipating devices for every student, and I know that there were questions about why. Why a student who has their own device maybe may not be able to use that in the class? Um, we had extensive conversations with staff about this. Um, I, I'm, I'm confident a parent would not realize this because they're, they're not, um, in the class, right? They, they, um, understand the experience from their point of view, which is completely understandable. In, in terms of a, a teacher who's working with students. Uh, we have to remember that they have a lot going on right now and things are going to be extremely complicated. Having the students on the same device, the same platform, enables them to teach them how to use that. Teach them how to incorporate the tools. Um, on our devices, we put in. Very specific protections and we don't allow other programs to be run in the background. Games, for example, or social media that students could have on their personal computers. We can't look in a personal computer or look at a personal computer to determine something's not there. It creates a great deal of complications, and when a student has difficulty in class, a teacher does not have the luxury of saying. You don't have a school device, I can't help you, or I don't know how to work that. Even if it's the exact device, we need to make sure that it has been. That it has, uh, been loaded with the appropriate software. We need to make sure that it has the capacity to run on our system. We need to be sure that the teacher knows how to troubleshoot the issue, and if they don't, that our tech, our, our technology staff. Will be able to fix it. Our technology staff will not touch a student's personal computer, um, and they, they can't do that. Um, and so they can't even make, um, very easy hardware, um, repairs. So for many reasons, um, the student is going to be given a device, uh, the youngest ones, very durable cases for them. And, uh, it really helps the educational aspect of using the device in the classroom. The student can use it at home if they wish, but we're going to be teaching very specific things on the tools. Uh, on the devices that we're providing, and so they've been chosen very purposefully. Um, and so while we did put out the information, if somebody wanted to purchase that, we are asking that when the kids are in school, they are using the school. Distributed device, uh, when they are available, because, um, they're, they're just, there are more reasons as well. But, um, it just is a lot, um, smoother in the classroom. And the teacher can offer a lot more, uh, support for the student when they have the same tools in front of them.
Okay, um, Christie Morgan, one oh four Randall Street. Will the dates for changing remote to hybrid be made available before the parents make their decision? With parent groups that are forming to support the teaching of their children outside of, okay, okay, that's the first question, let me, so if you want to answer that first question.
Yeah, that will be part of the.
Location skills.
That will be part of the particular building plans, because as I said, they all are, may have different, they, if. Just if they're going to do it at marking periods, for example, that's going to be different in each school. So that will be part of their building plans, they're working on those now, now that we have a plan for the district, they can, they can fast track that. And they will get them out as soon as possible.
Uh, also from Christie Morgan, with parent groups that are forming to support the teaching of their children outside of school. Support full-time working parents, will the specific curriculum and all work for every class? And each grade be the same across the board, no matter what teacher?
Not necessarily, not necessarily, um, that, that isn't the case now. Um, and you have to remember that the teachers are not necessarily able to plan everything with every teacher. So we have teachers, for example, first grade teachers who are in three different buildings. And so, uh, they can't necessarily have planning time all together at the same time, um, to make sure everything is, is exactly the same. Now, with that said, all of the teachers in a particular content area or grade level are teaching the same standards. And so that will, and always has been universal, and that will continue.
Uh, Christie McDonough, fourteen Cedar Drive. What support may be provided if a student or student's family tests positive? Or needs to quarantine to prevent bullying and ostracizing upon return to school?
We have very specific bullying procedures in place. Um, Chrissy is in charge ultimately of all district level reporting. It would fall into line with any other form of bullying, it is not tolerated, it is against the law. And, um, it is something that if it's ever brought to our attention is enforced completely. Melissa's already called us for that.
Melissa Scarry, thirty-nine Priscilla Road. Are Maplewood and the Y the only two options for community partnerships for childcare? I ask because I'm concerned that there will not be enough open, there will not be enough openings, thanks.
Um, they're the ones we're working on right now, we have to make sure that they are working up to our standards. So we will not just enter in a, a partnership with anyone. Uh, if there are other organizations that are willing to work at that level of detail with us, we will certainly meet with them. But that is, um, we're, we're not going to, uh, partner with anyone or recommend anyone unless they are. Unless we are confident that they are working to the same level of standards that we are in terms of supervision. Um, in terms of care, in terms of sanitation, health protocols and so forth. So, uh, they, if someone wants to reach out to them, we will absolutely meet with them. But certainly any parent, you're, you're not obliged to work with any of our partners. You can certainly, um, engage with any daycare provider or service, um, that you wish. It doesn't have to be one that is affiliated with the Easton Public Schools.
Four questions from Paul Rohr, Lincoln Street, about the reopening. One, ventilation, at the last meeting, someone asked a question about MERV thirteen filtration. But the FAQ hasn't been updated to answer that. When can we expect that answer?
Uh, I will not be updating FAQ until the state report is submitted, because, uh, that is the, that is our deadline right now. So un- unfortunately, I, I have some answers on there, so I'm glad you're asking the question, because I can tell you verbally. Uh, we have had the DPW as well as our custodians go through every building and make checklists for ventilation needs. We have had a company called CTI, who is an energy management system, come through and do the same thing and made recommendations. Uh, we have just contracted with an engineering firm, GGD, that is, um. Also going to make recommendations for every single building. I got an initial report today. And, uh, it's all very doable, it's no problem, there are MERV filters on there. They blow away the ASHRAE standards way above and beyond in every single school. There will be some protocol differences that were in the presentation last week or whenever it was. Um, as well as, um, the filters that has been confirmed. Uh, there are different numbered filters for different schools. The, the engineers are dictating that, so I can't say for sure it's thirteen. Uh, but it is the one that will be most complimentary for the system we have. For the purpose that we've asked them to do this, which is for proper ventilation for, um, this virus particularly. So they will let us know that, all the recommendations are going to be, be made public once we complete all the tasks. So that we can put out both documents at the same time, showing that we have completed everything that was recommended to us.
Number two, hybrid, on hybrid days, will there be any display options, projectors or big screens? So remote students can appear life-size within the classroom? Or will they only appear as tiny on-screen Chromebook images for the facilitator and their in-person peers?
Uh, the teachers have the capability, uh, different capabilities in different schools. Certainly, they have whiteboards and have the opportunity to do that, that would be up to the particular teacher, how they, how they, um, manage that in their classroom.
Number three, social distancing, will students at the high school be passing to different classes every period? How will we prevent seeing crowded halls like the viral pictures we've seen, we've been seeing recently from Georgia?
Yeah, first of all, we're far from being Georgia, thankfully. Um, we have very strict parameters in place. We have directional signage, we have floor stickers, we have one-way hallways, we have entrances and exits. Um, the, the administration is intimate with the layout of the building, and they are currently putting all those things in the building right now. To make sure that they minimize traffic. And, uh, obviously, once school starts, if we find that there's students who seem to be congregating in one particular area. They'll change the routes, they'll just adjust as necessary because they understand the goal. And, um, of course, it's social distancing, and so, um, we have bought all those materials already, they're, they've already told us what they need in terms of. Like you see in stores now, the dots on the floor or the tape that says stand here, um, the directions, as I said, one way, like you're seeing in, in stores. And, um, yeah, and staff, as always, during every passing period, staff always steps out of the classroom. That is a proactive strategy that we use at every, uh, school, and so they will absolutely be doing that, and so there will be supervision all the time. We also have cameras for security in classes, in, um, in our, um, common areas. So th- there's just as much supervision as always and, um, half the students, so.
Uh, social distancing, what is the maximum classroom capacity for each building at six foot spacing?
I actually have that chart, it's different everywhere because they're all different sizes. But that chart is actually going to go in the final report, I just, I don't have it pulled up right in front of me right now, I want to say. I, I don't even want to. Yeah, it varies by the school, um, but it is six foot social distancing, so, um. I, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but it will be in the report.
Uh, Kristen Stone, eight Picker Lane, with the change in bus routes. There may be more families who need to choose one hundred percent remote learning. Do you feel that those children at home will receive equitable education and attention from the classroom teachers? What steps will you take to ensure that the remote students feel like they are part of the school community?
Uh, we have excellent educators who know, um, exactly how to teach students and make them feel welcome. Um, I, I will be completely frank, and I've never been shy about this. Remote learning in any district in this world, uh, in, in any way. Is never going to be one hundred percent substitute for in-person learning. It just is not. This is not the same as having a meeting in person, I'm not seeing people asking questions, I cannot look them in the eye and answer them. We are missing out on social interactions, um, I can't pick up social cues, it will never be the same. But to the extent possible, our educators will be sure that the students get the same rigor of education. That they will, uh, be held accountable in the same way that the students in front of them are held accountable. Attendance is mandatory, grades are, um, given on everything that a teacher assigns for a grade. Uh, that will all be the same, there will be no lax, um, expectations on a student who is in remote learning. Uh, but I could never in, in, I, I would, it would be disingenuous of me to ever suggest. That remote learning will be an exact replication of in-person learning. In fact, the in-person learning we have now with restrictions is not going to be a one hundred percent. Um, replication of in-person learning that we're used to, uh, but it is an improvement on, um. Not having the social interaction, there just is no way to, to replicate that effectively. Or some therapies, it's very difficult to replicate effectively, speech therapy, for example, depends on the quality of a device someone is using. So I, I, you know, physical therapy, for example, I, it's very difficult, you cannot direct a student. Or, um, move their body to. To do what it is, um, to, to help correct their, their, um, gait or their postures, for, for example. So, um. In all honesty, it will not be one hundred percent the same, however, they will be educated in, within Easton Public Schools. Education, which is among the best of the state, which makes it among the best in the country.
If, um, if I can add to that, I'm on the Special Ed and English Language Learner Working Group. And, um, the, you know, this is the subject that's come up a lot among those educators. And there's been a lot of, uh, story sharing about the concerns about engagement from the spring with remote learners. And, um, and, you know, how this will be dramatically different. And, uh, I just want to assure the person who asked the question that, um, it's, it's a huge area of focus. To make sure that remote learners feel connected, um, are attend, are attending and, and are accountable. Um, for, for their work and for their engagement, and there was a huge outreach in the spring. To students who seem to be slipping off the radar or not, not quite engaging as much as they, uh, as ideally should have. And just, just a very, very big personal outreach effort to reach those students and those families and make sure that things were okay. And that, uh, those educators were doing everything within their power, um, to give those students the best experience possible. So it's, it's a very big focus, um, especially among the most vulnerable student populations.
And, and a big part of that was teachers physically traveling to students' homes. Uh, because i- it, it becomes critical to make connections at some point, and obviously, we didn't require that. Uh, it's just an example of, um, the care and the, um, dedication that our educators have for our students. That was never a requirement. Um, it, it's really, um, what I've seen in this district. Um, in terms of, um, the, the, um. Sensitivity of our professionals and how much they care about their students. It's, it's really, it's unparalleled in, in many other places. So, um, I'm sure you'll see a great deal of effort on that front, please do not compare it to the spring. That was very different, our staff had no preparation whatsoever. There were some people who had never used Google Meet, and now we're teaching a class with it. Um, you have to understand, they were also at home with their own children. That were perhaps learning on a different platform, they were ill, they were taking care of family members who were ill. We were all, you know, there were, there was a lot of, um, anxiety and trauma. And, uh, it, it's, there's no comparison, there is just no comparison between then and now, we have ti- had time, um, to. Um, prepare differently. Again, it, it, I don't expect perfection in terms of, um. Utilizing certain tools, uh, devices may break down, systems may fail, but we'll fix them and we'll move on, and we'll be better for the experience. What we won't compromise on is safety, and we feel as though we have a solid plan for that right now.
Jody Bryant, eleven Tony Drive, thank you for your exhaustive work here, can you please de- detail what PPE will look like on teachers? I'm worried about kids' anxiety around this, but more importantly, we keep teachers safe.
Yes, um, so our primary consideration, and, and we've said this and it's in all our reports, is staff and student safety. Um, and so staff i- are going to get the same mask protocols as everyone else. We will provide masks if they need them, or they can bring one of their own if it meets the standards and, and keeps them safe. Naturally, there are teachers who are going to be in different situations, and so we've accounted for that, and we have working groups. Um, considering all levels of interaction. Some staff are going to need face shields in addition, we have, uh, disposable compounds and gloves for the nurses. We have, they're just, i- i- it depends on the role, but we have examined all roles. We've put up Plexiglas dividers in certain situations, um. We've done a lot of work for the facilities, but also the PPE. Um, and, oh, the first part of the question, sorry, i- in terms of the students. Our teachers are experts in child development, and so they have, have been ahead of this from the get-go. Um, we have teachers who have talked about making videos to send to the students to show what they look like with a mask off. But what they look like with a mask on, the principals have talked about showing students what they look like with a mask on. Um, we, and, and why they're wearing a mask, um, they're putting together all this introductory information. Um, we have encouraged in our newsletter for parents to get students used to wearing the masks, but also to, excuse me. Uh, explain why people are wearing masks, what people look like. what people look like with masks, have your children see you with a mask on and see that it's not scary. Uh, there, the teachers have been given, uh, not just the teachers, but the, um, counseling staff have been very, um, sensitive to this issue. They put out a lot of videos and information. And, uh, you can imagine what they have planned for the beginning of school. They, it's, as I said, and I'm, I'm glad you asked this question because I hope that more people like yourself understand just how important this is. There's, this is an orientation in the beginning of school. It's about building relationships, and part of building relationships is having these conversations so students feel safe and that they know that they are with trusted adults. Um, we do this all the time, and this throws wrinkles into it, but our staff's prepared. They're ready to have these conversations and, and have these children know that they're loved. And so they are well aware of things that are scary for children. We have, uh, some people working on creating masks with the, um, clear section taken out on the mask so that certain students can read social cues, or if they are nervous, they're able to have a mask on. We have our lovely model here, Jen Star, who's showing you an example of one. Uh, so they've taken all these things into consideration. So thank you for that question. There, it's very important.
Uh, last question as of this moment. Danielle, uh, Danielle Smith, 383 Bay Road Northeastern. I apologize if this has been asked. This is in regards to nursing availability. For example, if the nurse is, i- if, if the nurse is present in one-to-one situation with a potentially COVID-19 child, will there be a second nurse present to care for, for example, my type-one daughter or any other sick child with a medical issue? Given that the nurse will be in PPE hazmat gear and cannot cross-contaminate. Thank you for everyone, for everyone's hard work.
Um, we did talk about this, but it's an important question, so, uh, thank you for asking it. Uh, we have confirmed that we are not able to hire staff with our grant money. However, we can hire subs in overtime. So we are, um, we haven't, either we have an ad out or it's going out. Um, we did, we do have an ad that's been out for substitute nurses. We're putting ads out for long-term substitutes. I don't, I honestly can't tell you if it's out yet or not. So we have opportunities. We're looking for the staff. So, um, hopefully, we can find people that are available. We know that, that obviously, the healthcare system has been very overtaxed. Um, hopefully, these people are available. We're actively looking for them. So, um, the answer is yes, hopefully. We're actively looking for them, and, uh, if you know anybody, have them contact us.
That's it for the questions.
Thank you very much. Nice job. Uh, Superintendent Notes, Dr. Cabral.
Um, I'm sure somebody's gonna talk about graduation, right?
You can do it. Go ahead.
No, it's okay, especially Michelle. She should be able to do that. No, it's fine. Uh, it's fine. Lot of stuff going on. You're gonna be getting a lot of information from us soon.
Assistant Superintendent Notes.
I wanted to take the opportunity just to let everyone know that while we are working tirelessly on the reopening plans, there is also still work occurring, uh, around race and equity within our district. So we have a wonderful, um, book group occurring that is in the final phase of, of meeting. Leana Gerstein and Gina Pham, two of our middle schools, uh, teachers are facilitating that book group around, um, Waking Up White by Debbie Irving. There are 24 participants in it, and they have just been engaged all summer long with extremely incredible dialogue. In fact, Leana and I were speaking and she had shared how hopeful and how encouraged she is by the conversation from our educators. So I just wanna give a shout out that throughout all of this, this work is still always on the forefront. Um, and this, uh, this work actually began before the murder of George Floyd. And I just wanted to highlight that I'm very proud to be a part of that, that work in Easton, and we still have a long way to go. And it is not something that we would ever give up on. This is still very, very in the forefront of our work as we plan.
Thank you. Okay, Caroline.
Very nicely said, Chrissy, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of your, appreciative of your efforts and, uh, the partnerships that we've, uh, managed to put together. I, I just wanted to say a little bit more about, you know, how difficult that vote was and just recognize that the decision is not going to be fully satisfactory for any parent, any student, any teacher. We understand that. Um, and we're gonna do everything we can to, as Leisha always says, be nimble, respond quickly if conditions change. Um, and we're all gonna have all our fingers crossed, I know, as we move into this really, um, this period of even greater uncertainty than we've already been experiencing in many ways. Because it involves all the children of our community and really of the nation, so it's, um, it's a grand experiment. But, um, one that's really, you know, quite frightening. I think most of the committee members would agree with me. Um, I did wanna thank Nancy for, um, putting the, uh, proposed policy for, um, face coverings on the agenda for next time. I was really happy to see the Mass Association, Mass Association of School Committees come up with a, a sample policy because this was a concern that I had. Um, you do see occasionally, unfortunately, uh, posts on Facebook, parents saying they're telling their children they don't have to wear a mask, that it's some kind of personal freedom issue. Um, it's, it's really not. It's a public health issue. And, uh, the Mass Association of School Committee, um, policy makes that very clear. And it is also consistent with the, uh, governor's order that people must wear face coverings in public. So I'm, I'm, I know that we need to have two readings, so I'm hoping that we can quickly, um, make some changes perhaps to the mask policy and MASC in this case, and, um, maybe make some alterations. One of the things that they do talk about is removing the mask during physical education. I'm not sure that is actually necessary. I have to say that my husband and I have been experimenting, taking long vigorous walks with our masks on just to see if that's possible. I know that's not, um, playing basketball, but I, I do think that we have to err on the side of caution. And as Leisha has pointed out in the past, sometimes the guidance we get from various entities is not as strong as we might want to pursue ourselves in terms of a policy. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to, ahead of time, ask people to consider that maybe we should look at that sample policy with a critical eye and potentially we can even strengthen it. Because I do think it's, I think mask-wearing is going to be one of the key factors in terms of whether we're successful with this hybrid model.
Now, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody, Michelle? Michelle?
Yep, I was unmuting. I also wanna reiterate what Caroline said. That vote was very, very tough. And none of us took, take that lightly. I'm not gonna go at that for right now. Uh, graduation on a positive note was absolutely amazing. And, um, Mr. Paul and Mr. Flannigan and Ms. Billy did an amazing job, um, organizing and orchestrating all the little pieces that had to fall into place to make that a safe. And, um, just as memorable as if COVID wasn't here, um, ceremony. Great speakers and, um, there is a member of their class that received their diploma first and the support from the entire class for that student was just brought tears to her eyes. It was just wonderful just to see that, um, support for that student and that family. The students, they really, um, were appreciative and just so glad to have that one moment. All right, someone else, I have to talk. Um, have that moment in all the things that they didn't get to have, so. I just thank you to them, and anyone wants to add to that, thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, Michelle. Um, Jackie?
Thank you. Yes, graduation was really amazing. It was so nice to be at a happy, fun event where we could all still be safe, but everyone was just happy. It was nice. Um, so we have, Mass Association of School Committees has a, is hosting a Zoom call for school committee members with Commissioner Riley next week. So, we're all looking forward to that, I'm sure. Um, and just the final thing I wanna say is, um, uh, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight about the vote. I, I do think it really weighed on us very heavily. It was not easy. Um, but I think, I think it was important that we are all together on it and that we are all, um, consistent in our message about monitoring the situation and staying, staying on the front lines of this decision. So I just wanna thank my fellow school committee members for doing the brave thing. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Sure. Um, um, I echo everybody else's comments about the, the difficulty of this vote. Um, I, uh, engaged with a few people today and just said, this is, this is just, it's, it's gonna be really, really tough, and it was. But, um, I, I'm glad that we have the vote done, not because it's over, but because it means that the next steps can begin. So we can start getting all of those concrete plans in place that need to happen and families can start putting their plans in place. And, um, you know, the flexibility of this model means that if, if we need to, as said before, if we need to pivot, we pivot, we'll be able to, you know, to, to keep on top of metrics and feedback and make decisions, um, quickly. So, uh, I'm, I, again, I'm, it's, it's, it's been a really tough few months. Um, this has been a really tough decision. We appreciate all of the feedback. Um, you know, we, we're hearing from, through, you know, official channels, people emailing the school committee and then through, you know, social media and texts and conversations and everywhere you go, everybody's asking you. You know, what, what's the plan? What do you think? Uh, you know, they tell you their concerns and their thoughts and, and it's just all, it's been a lot of information, but very much appreciated and reflects, again, just how personal this is, how much of it's a, a family-by-family situation. And, and I hope that, you know, the plan we put forth, uh, gives families the flexibility that they need to make, um, you know, what they feel is the best decision for their families and, and to also, you know, be able to change as circumstances change. Um, so then on a more positive note, I modeled the, um, part of our mask project, so we've, we've got some window masks underway, could definitely use some, uh, some more sewers for those. They're, they're quite labor-intensive. We have materials, we have patterns. Um, so if anybody would like to join that effort, um, and hasn't already reached out to me, please reach out to Jen Walsh Star with two R's at Gmail. Um, and also wanted to, uh, we'll send a, a formal thank you, but, um, a parent from Moro Hall, I don't know if folks can see my dining room table.
I was just gonna ask you.
Oh, my goodness. So, so, uh, Debbie, Debbie Porter from, uh, Moro Hall, who I believe was a former sewing teacher? Yeah, and that's only half of the fabric, and it's all like the most fun patterns, cats and dogs and Celtics and pencils and, and really, really fun stuff. So, um, that was definitely a bright. Yeah, that was huge and a real bright spot this week to be able to, you know, to share that with the people sewing and, and we'll have some fun patterns to work with as we, uh, get those masks made for students and staff who need them. So, thanks to everybody who's helping, who's helping out with that.
Okay, thank, that's awesome. Thank you. Um, I have a question for Dr. Cabral. The bus boat that we just took, that's just for this coming up year. Until we would make another decision next year about that bus, two-mile and pay and ride, right?
Yes.
Just for, yeah. Uh, maybe for Chrissy, but also maybe for Dr. Cabral. The, so, uh, is the school committee invited to the new subgroups that are gonna be formed? We're still invited in? Okay.
Of course. Yes, of course, yeah.
No, I'm just asking if we're gonna.
Yes, no, of course. We appreciate the input. It's extremely valuable. It's very helpful. If anybody would like to be on the PD committee, just let them know.
Yeah, Jackie and I are ready to be like.
Caroline.
No, no, I, I actually have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Caroline.
I just have one more comment that I, I forgot, uh, uh, Dr. Cabral, um, that I did wanna compliment you on the newsletters that you've been sending out for families and the FAQs that you're updating. I think that's enormously informative. And I know it must be very labor-intensive, but it's, it's super important. So I compliment you. Thank you.
Thank you. Like everything else, we have a phenomenal team working on that. So, uh, Colleen, it's a subcommittee of our Communications Committee. So, uh, it's, it's, you know, participation from all of the committees, all of the committees send information. But specifically, Colleen Clark, Leana Gerstein and Cindy Arnold, uh, work on that. So I, I thank them very much, um, for the work of putting it together. But it's certainly a lot of hands are in it, and so, but like everything else, it's a group effort. So I appreciate that and I wanna make, I will, um, pass on that compliment. It's very appreciated. We hope it's informative and we're always taking suggestions of the things that can be added to it as well.
And you know, the working groups generally are just fantastic. I mean, uh, David Trombley is chairing one of my working groups, the Facilities and Supplies Committee. And Marilyn Gordon is chairing the Finance and Personnel Committee, which, uh, Jen is on as well. And, um, they've just both been doing a fabulous job. And it's, um, you know, aside from being really important work, it's, you know, lots of fascinating things come up. And, um, so I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be on those committees. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, graduation was wonderful. Six feet apart, the kids were great. Um, the three speakers did a wonderful job. So if you get a chance, you can watch that on ECAT. It was very nice, beautiful day. Um, also, uh, the Monday, we had scheduled a meeting, a school committee meeting for Monday in case we could not come to a decision today. But as Jackie said, it was good that we all agreed and so that we, there will be no Monday meeting. Um, I wanna thank everybody that's attending this Zoom meeting and Facebook Live. I know everybody's not gonna be happy with our decision, but again, like we heard in March, we're all in this together, so. Um, the next meeting is August 13th, 5 o'clock on Zoom. And I like being on Zoom for many reasons, uh, but one is that we can have more people with us than if we were at the, um, Simmons Lecture Hall, although I cannot wait to get back there. But this way, we can have, you know, we could have 200 people here giving input. So that's, Zoom is working out for us right now. Okay, um, I'm gonna make a motion to adj- anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, but I have to make a motion to enter into executive session to conduct collective bargaining session for non-union personnel, data specialists, directors, special services and BCBAs. And by having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. I need a second, please.
Wiseman, second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote to, to enter.
O'Neil, yes?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, very much. Thank you, Lynn and Joe, ECAT, Marilyn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.